We're good, all right, we're good to go. All right, council, I'd like to call this committee the meeting for March sixteenth, twenty twenty-three to order of an adoption of the agenda. Someone want to make that motion for me, please? Council Orlando, seconded by Council Cherry. All in favor, motions carried. We do have all of council today present. Council Palmer is online and is here, and we have staff online as well. So we're going to go into adoption of minutes for the special committee of the whole February second, twenty twenty-three. Moved by.
Mayor Solz.
Yes.
Just, just a question. I missed it. I was having, struggling with my audio here. Just on the agenda, I know it's passed already. Just to comment on that, it's a, it's a lengthy agenda. And I noticed that the financial stuff that we're working on, you know, one of the most important things that we do in the year and is often in a separate meeting. I, I'm concerned about that. I think we've passed already on the motion on the agenda. I would have liked to have seen some changes to that. But I'm willing to move on, but I, I'm expressing concern about the agenda. There is a lot of reports that are important and good to have. And then we have a possibly a controversial issue, and then we're going to be tired out and put some motion, you know, move along on the budget stuff that, and I, I don't think that's wise. So that's just like some comments. Thanks.
All right, thanks. Sorry, I go back to adoption of the minutes, special committee of the whole for February second. Someone want to make that motion for me? Counselor Stapener, seconded by Counselor Cherry. All in favor, motions carried. Adoption of the minutes, special committee of the whole, February fourteenth. Counselor Cherry, seconded by Counselor Lucille, all in favor, motions carried. Committee of the whole, February sixteen. Counselor Devlin, second by Counselor Lucille, all in favor, motions carried. And then special committee of the whole for February twenty-one. Counselor Stapener, second by Counselor Devlin, all in favor, motions carried. Any business arising from committee of the whole for February second? Seeing none, any business arising from special committee of the whole, February fourteen? Seeing none, committee of the whole, February sixteen? And special committee of the whole, February twenty-one. Counselor Lucille.
Thanks, Mr. Solz. I was just wondering if RMR has set a date for their public engagement?
Yes.
I believe that's going to be in March. Is it March twenty-one or something?
Your worship, yes, they have set a date for March twenty-eighth, which we have a council meeting, but from three P M. until eight P M. At the community center.
Okay, thank you very much.
Good. All right, so announcements from the mayor. We have a big agenda today, absolutely, Counselor Palmer, thank you for that. So in our council chambers, we have our fire chief, DeRosa. We have Sergeant Dodd from our RCMP and from our regional RCMP staff Sergeant Sean Beg is here. And I thank you all for your presence here today. With that, those of you who know me know that I was involved in the RCMP auxiliary in the nineties. So today, I send our condolences as council and staff to the city of Edmonton and the Edmonton Police Service. Lost two of their members yesterday in the domestic dispute. And having been on the ground and seen that sort of thing, my heart breaks for those families. So I just want to say our condolences as a, as a community. And in basically from this mayor to their mayor, we're sorry that you, your community has to experience that. So having said that, I just want to go on and we will move on to staff reports, RCMP fourth quarter. Sergeant Dodd. You can move the podium over here or you want to connect, sure.
Thanks, your worship and council for having me today. I appreciate your invite to today's proceeding. So today I'm providing you with the twenty twenty-two year-end report for the RCMP. It's basically a bunch of stats. And, and a little bit about our year that was for us. And I'm certainly open to take any questions that anybody has. So our municipally, our total calls for service. Sorry, our total calls for service municipally persons investigations were five hundred and thirteen. Mental health act fifty-four. Most of these, I should say before we get going, most of these numbers for twenty-two, you'll see how it's kind of, we've, we've bumped up in the, the last kind of quarter or so of twenty-two, as we kind of moved out of COVID and lockdowns, et cetera. So across the board, most of our percentages have gone, have gone up in, on our call line. So missing persons. Sorry, I might have been wrong enough to start there. Five ninety-six for persons investigation, seventy for mental health, twenty-three for missing persons and SAR calls. As you can see, that, that was a big jump from two thousand and twenty-one. We had two robberies. The sex assaults have gone, did go up as the bars and stuff opened up. Keep in mind, these are calls for service and these are not founded, all founded. So these are just purely calls for service. And so that stat is high, but some of those cases are, were not founded or there was no charge as a result. Coroner, coroner's act twelve. Harassment theft seventy-five, assaults eighty-nine and nine-one-ones. Abandoned nine-one-one, sorry, check well beings and just general assistance files three hundred and six. Obviously, our quarantine act, calls for service went substantially down from two thousand and twenty-one from thirty-nine to four. So as we moved out of that phase of our lives, hopefully. Property calls for service in the municipality, total calls for service was eight sixty-seven in twenty-two. So we're up a little bit there. Breaking enters, we're down at eighteen. Theft in motor vehicle twenty-eight, which is a little bit up from twenty-one. Mischief's a little bit up at two oh seven and other property was six fourteen. That just kind of catches everything else. It doesn't fit in those other, those other topics there. Other criminal code calls for service. So that, that's kind of the catch-all for the rest of the things, two hundred and twenty-five. So you can see it went up. Liquor act started to bump up and drugs, federal, federal, different federal acts that we charge under fifteen. There's obviously a change in that because of the, some of the drug laws changing and also Crown not charging for any personal use levels of drugs, even pre, pre the latest change with the, yeah, with the, with the lost for words here for, anyways, the latest legislation that's come out now. Exemption, sorry, that's what I'm looking for. Other provincial acts, two sixty-one and bylaw tickets that we issued were just ten in twenty-two, so a little bit up from twenty-one. You can see at the other side that we got the three-year averages, so still pretty much within range. Municipal traffic. So we had a hundred and four collisions, nine of them were injuries, zero fatalities. But two hundred and twenty-five calls for service for, for impaired driving and a lot of that is a lot of those are self-generated files. So that's members doing work within the municipality, pulling over cars and investigating people, drivers for being impaired while operating motor vehicle.
Scared me there when you said self-generated, going like, these people are calling up, hey, I just said.
No, sorry, sorry, I shouldn't use that self-generated is a, is a term we use. I shouldn't use that. That's police officer generated. So that's, that's pulling people over, doing street, road checks, counter attack checks, stuff like that. An interesting stat that I don't have on there, but I pulled for, for everyone's benefit is everyone knows that highway patrol has a unit here that they share office space with us here at, at the detachment. So their, their statistics show four hundred and twenty-three traffic contacts within the municipality for twenty twenty-two. So that's, and if you add it to ours, we're about six hundred and sixty-two traffic contacts within the municipality. So pretty good, like close to two a day. You know, if you total it all up and yeah, so. But concerning, you know, always impaired driving is about, you know, continuous battle for, for enforcement. And, and depending on who's working and members, if that's their forte, we do, we do run into them almost daily.
Yeah.
So, yeah, coming out of the, coming around the core of the city. Calls for, I put the provincial stat in there just because I think it's important to know that we're out on the provincial highways as well for the, for the city. Hundred and eighty-five collisions in twenty twenty-two, thirty-six injury collisions. We had one fatality. And impaired driving in the, in, in the rural area, twenty-seven calls for service. So pretty consistent over the last three years, you know, three, your, your average is twenty-two. Um, just to give you a little snapshot of what we do inside the office. And just our total totality of calls, so three hundred and, or sorry, three thousand seven hundred and ninety-one calls for service. For twenty twenty-two, that's total. The municipal calls for service were twenty-four hundred and nine. And provincial calls for service thirteen hundred and eighty-two. Definitely lower. I have one I see just here that I've got a mistake there on the three-year average for the provincial calls, but anyway. Our, our three-year average in total calls for service are thirty-eight hundred, so we're not far off the mark for that, for twenty twenty-two. And prisoners' lodge last year, eighty-eight, we had eighty-eight guests that are in. And our, our three-year average is much higher than that. You know what? That might be, I'm just looking at that. That doesn't look great, but anyways, I'll double check on that, so. Sorry for that. Telephone calls during office hours, and we track this so we can keep it. So we can keep a really good handle on our administrative staff and how busy they are. And so thirty-eight hundred and one telephone calls during our office hours at the, to the detachment front counter. And then two thousand four hundred and forty-three visits, people coming through our front door to ask questions, get criminal record checks, all kinds of stuff.
Important number.
Yeah, so our administrative staff is really busy and keep in mind that we only have two point five, two point five administrative, municipal administrative staff there and two public services. So, yeah. Police information checks. So those are generally for, you know, volunteering purposes for criminal record checks, three hundred and seventeen. Two hundred and twenty-seven hours in transcription for last year. So that's transcribing statements that we take from victims or persons that we're investigating. Nineteen liquor license reviewed. So we've gone right up from one in twenty twenty-one to nineteen. So that's, that's and I only review now liquor licenses over five hundred. So over five hundred in attendance. So the liquor, the solo policy has changed and we don't, I don't review anything under five hundred now.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's, they're basically auto approved through the liquor board, not us.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we do get confirmation of, of the, of the event happening. And then SAR calls for service twenty-nine, we're down from twenty-one, which is a little bit strange. But we're creeping out back into the SAR, on the SAR side already this year in twenty twenty-three. And I expect it to continue with visitors coming to town. Our proposed annual performance planning goals for twenty-three, twenty-four are continue to, to work on impaired driving, obviously prevention and enforcement within the city and in the rural area. Traffic safety, speed enforcement, that's always a hot button topic, both within the city limits and also on the highway. So we're going to keep plugging away at that. Municipal traffic enforcement, so cell phone use, seat belts, distracted driving, stop signs, et cetera. That's another one. Theft from auto seems to continue in sporadic, you know, here and there, we get a little cluster of thefts, thefts from auto. So we're going to continue to work on that, both in enforcement and prevention and try and work with, you know, the hotels and stuff to, to to, you know, make sure that they're letting their guests know to, you know, secure their vehicles and put, put valuables out of sight, out of mind, kind of thing, so.
So Chris, when we, when we see this theft from auto, is it usually unlocked vehicles or they're actually breaking in physically?
Yeah, most of our thefts from auto are basically opportunity type thefts where the, the vehicle's unlocked, there's change in the cup holder. There's some kind of, you know, something of value that's left in the back of the truck or in the backseat or something like that. So backpacks, golf clubs, stuff that you can easily carry, carry away on your, you know, under your arm kind of thing. And we do see most of the theft from auto stuff kind of happen downtown core towards highway, kind of in that section. And we do get, you know, the odd little bumps of other places. And then around the highway core, highway, highway one, Victoria, you know, and into the Columbia Park side, so yeah, around the hotel.
Where they can get out easy on the highway.
Yeah, and so some, you know, being on a main artery, highway one, we do have the when we do get little spice like that, often it's, can be traveled, traveling people coming through and they're sneaking around in the middle of the night. You know, being opportunistic. And then assaults prevention and reduction. And then we're, we're working, you know, now that the bars are back open and stuff like that, we, you know, I have had some conversations at the women's shelter and kind of looking at some, what our options are in terms of maybe some awareness programs or something else that, something that's out there that we can adapt for, for the local area. And just regular assaults, persons assaults, violence relationships, we continue to, to always, you know, look to, look at methods to reduce that type of stuff happening within our community. And that's, that's it.
Counsel, any questions? Any, any comments?
Hi, your worship. Thank, thank you so much for the presentation, Corporal Dodd. I just wanted to double check. Just a definition, when you say calls for service, does that literally mean someone calls in? Or does that also mean a member sees something going on and like, so for example, impaired driving, is that twenty-six calls of people seeing someone swerving on the road? Or is that maybe a member driving down the road and noticing that?
Yeah, any, so when I refer to calls for service, that's just any call that we get, whether it's, whether it's in very high level of calls are investigated by our members, but anything that comes through the door. So it's just a, a report of an erratic driver that, that we don't locate. That's, it's, everything is in one basket. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And, and thank you for, for the answer and just to follow up. So if a member is out on patrol and sees someone swerving down the road and pulls them over, is that not a call for service? Is that counted as a call for service? Or how is, how is that statistic incorporated?
Sorry. So if there's a file. But if there's a file generated, if there's a file number generated, that's a call for service. Yeah, so if, as long, if there's a file been generated, that's a call for service. And some don't get investigated because they're very they're, they're not requiring an actual member response.
Okay.
We have a cross-section of those files, but not very many.
Sure.
Counselor Palmer.
Yeah, thank you to the sergeant for the report. Statistics I find interesting and probably multitude of ways of sort of analyzing them. Just a comment, I had, did a nine-one-one call a couple of months ago regarding an erratic driver. And often wonder, you know, what happens to those things? Am I just being a nuisance and that kind of thing? And the officer, she phoned back just to confirm that they were able to connect with the person and was dealt with. And so it was just really appreciative of that. I know it's a little extra certain level of service and, but certainly from a public perspective, it was certainly appreciated. But thank you for your report.
And here, counsel, any other questions or comments?
Your worship, if you, if you don't mind, I'll, I'll just add to that, like everyone that makes a complaint to the police. It's our policy that they get a call back. So they, they should be getting a call back to, to tell them what action was taken by police or just to give them a quick follow-up. Often we'll call them anyway to get more information. And yeah, so it, it is, you know, it is required that our members are obviously calling back our complaints. Sometimes we can't get a hold of them, but we do call.
Oh, great. We should, Counselor Lynn.
Through your worship to Sergeant Dodd and, and Counselor Palmer just reminded me somewhere in these statistics, I, I chased someone nine blocks barefoot this year and with the help of the RCMP, we managed to catch the person. So yeah, I don't know what, what category it is under, but yeah, I was waiting to, to see that coordination, so.
You have to find a new category. Awesome. Any other comments? All right, moving on. Chief DeRosa, you have your annual report.
Thank you, worship. Is Ms. Del Sol able to bring up the, the document for us? Or you might be able to? Okay, that'd be great. So while that's being brought up, just wanted to highlight, of course, the report does provide statistics outlines our achievements over the, the past year, any, anything that has come through. And while I hit started, of course, I wanted to thank council for your support, those previous council and the current council. And we'll go through this hopefully fairly quickly. And of course, take any questions along the way or at the end if you wish. Can we do a full screen on this one? Just so that you can see what I'm, I'm looking at here. You know, what we can go through, it's a pretty picture on the front page anyways. So of course, worship, you'll recognize the strength that we're on there.
Yep.
As, as being close to home for you. And if we can go to page three. I just wanted to highlight the, the primary goal of the Redstone Fire Department is to provide fire protection and rescue services through a range of programs designed to protect the lives and property of residents and visitors to Redbone Stone. Primarily first to the city of Redbone Stone. Second to the fire protection agreement of electoral area B in the CSRD. Third to the fire service agreements that the city may have with other entities such as Parks Canada. And fourth to the road rescue services for the traveling public that travel highway one and twenty-three north and south. And if we take a look at page four. So this is just a summary of the statistics that are contained throughout the rest of the document for you. So the details, we can get into a few of those if you like. So this is just a summary to highlight all the information that is further on further pages for you. And we could go through all of that, but I think what I'll do is I'll just skip through to the, to the individual pages that I'd like to highlight for you. So page five would be the next one. And this just to outline a little bit of the area served by Redstone Fire Department. So we have, by census, eight thousand two hundred and seventy-five residents. We have a shadow population. We're not sure exactly what they are because they're not fully registered. We serve an area of forty square kilometers. According to census, we have three thousand three hundred and fifty-four private dwellings. So by census, that works out to about two and a half people per dwelling. And if we bump it up with our shadow population, we're looking at somewhere between the neighborhood of three and a half, maybe four and a half persons per, per dwelling. So that works out to a population density of about two hundred and three, or if we include those shadow population, we're looking at somewhere in the three hundred per square kilometer. Some primary objectives of the fire department, of course, there's a number of them there. So one of the most important ones for fires, of course, and medicals is to meet the response time targets established by the NFPA. Ensure all personnel are proficient, modern firefighting techniques and able to cooperate with the other municipal departments. So that could be public works or bylaw, stuff like that, within our municipality, not other municipalities, but potentially. Ensure that our firefighting equipment is maintained and available within the municipality, within those response time targets. Maintain a maintenance program to reduce out of service occurrences, ensuring the firefighting apparatus and equipment is safe, reliable, and ready to respond to emergencies. So we call that response ready. We get the call, trucks are going to roll out the door, all equipment is going to work. Develop and maintain positive working relationships with other agencies related to the protection of life and property. Maintain an effective public information system and educational program with emphasis on school fire safety programs. Manage a system for regular fire safety inspections and follow-up inspections of hotels and public buildings to reduce life safety hazards. And to manage and lead the Redstone and an area B emergency program, the R A M, in cooperation with E F C. So those are some of our primary objectives. And as we go through a little bit more, if we can skip to page six. So this is Fire Prevention and Inspection Division. And so we, we went through and looked at some of the statistical information, particularly business licenses versus inspectable properties. So there's quite a difference in those numbers there, but not all businesses are inspectable. We do have about five hundred inspectable properties. But I would like to highlight that not all properties are inspected each and every year. Some of them actually have six-month intervals on fire inspection, some are by annually. So every two years and some are only an initial business license application as well. So even though we're five hundred inspectable properties, we only inspected a hundred and eighty last year. There are more that need to be inspected and I'm reviewing the inspection frequency document to see how that could be modified to, to provide better, better higher life safety inspections on that. So we do have some work is needed on that, some work is needed to improve that. And you can see the, the graph there in little fancy neon colors just highlights the last five years. So it's been pretty consistent. And, and we're down a little bit. Sorry, we're up. Twenty eighteen was, was lower than, than the rest. So we're roughly three hundred and seventy-five, three hundred and ninety-five inspections per year. Next one is page seven. Fire Department Training Division. The objective for the training standards is to identify and focus on the competencies and the skills that all structural firefighters must have for perform the functions of firefighter for their community. And so twenty twenty-two, we had two thousand five hundred and two point five hours put in. So there's in sixty-eight sessions. So that would be Wednesday and weekend sessions or special sessions.
Right.
And one of the things that wanted to report for you was the certifications by percentage of firefighters, both in career volunteer and what that percentage is. So if you are not aware already, we are a composite fire department. We, it's a mix of career firefighters and volunteer firefighters. And the mix to be composite department versus a career or volunteer department is eighty-five and fifteen percent of either or. So that's where we fall into the mix there. So we do have five career firefighters. All of those have their ten oh one. Fifteen volunteer firefighters have their ten oh one for a total of twenty. And we'll note that there were thirty-three firefighters on the department at the end of twenty twenty-two. And we'll note that there were thirty-three firefighters on the department at the end of two thousand twenty-two. So that means sixty-one percent of the firefighters have achieved their full N F P one thousand one professional qual for qualifications for firefight. And again, as we go down, E V O is emergency vehicle operator, so driving with our trucks, code three, so emergency lights and sirens. Five career fourteen volunteer for total nineteen fifty-eight percent. And as you as you look at the the numbers there, N F P A ten twenty-one fire officer, one, we only have two. So other firefighters, career firefighters are in training, but they've not received their certificates of completion yet. And so one thing that I would highlight is that we don't actually have lieutenant and captain ranks in our fire department at the moment. So we're training them to that fire officer level because they need to be able to have that supervisory capacity, even though it's it's not within their their rank structure at the moment. We have one firefighter on duty in two thousand twenty-two. And we're moving towards two firefighters on duty as as much as we can with the numbers of firefighters that we've got. Would like to highlight also that the number of officers and firefighters on duty does influence the insurance grading. And from the percentage numbers here that you can see on the right column, again, more work is needed to improve the level of training. Page eight suppression division. So the statistics here relate to the response time targets for emergency response activities in two thousand twenty-two. The improvement in these numbers to meet those N F P A response time targets. So if you look at the chart, is it a chart or table? It is table. For structure firefighters, the average minutes is seven minutes seventeen seconds for fourteen qualifying structure fires. The average shoot time is one minute, five seconds. So that's sixty-five seconds to get that truck out the door. And the N F P standard for that first truck arriving on scene is five minutes, twenty seconds. And so the first due apparatus response time target, I struggle with that one all the time. The first due response time target is five minutes, twenty second from the time that we receive the incident to the time we arrive at the scene. The N F P standard is looking for a ninety percentile for nine percent of the time. We can't make it all the time, but right now we're looking at the department sitting at twenty-nine percent, not ninety percent. So more work is needed to improve that. Similarly, with fire alarms, we're looking at our average time of seven minutes, seven seconds out of fifty qualifying alarms calls for twenty-eight percent. And medical calls, we're looking at nine minutes, forty-eight seconds to get a minimum of two medical first responders on scene. So we're sitting at seventeen percent of that, and that's partly due to how the operations are currently happening after hours. Weekends and that. So again, more work is needed to improve these response times. And so an interesting thing that I wanted to pull out for you was the the calls by day of week. So if you look at the the graph for Monday, sorry, Sunday through Saturday, you can see that it's busy on the weekends, Friday, Saturday, Sunday are busiest times. Drops down Monday, Tuesday, and then we get a slight bump on Wednesdays. And then we drop down on Thursday. So I don't know what's unique about Wednesday around here. I wouldn't normally expect to see an increase in call numbers during midweek. It's usually the Friday, Saturday, Sunday. So statistically, we're looking pretty, pretty close on that. Page dying is our incident by type and location. So we attended three hundred seventy incidents in two thousand twenty-two. We did actually receive four hundred and eight calls. And the difference is the number that did not require a response. There was no response to the additional calls. It could be transferred incident from one area to another. It could be dispatchers getting the wrong city, same street, but wrong city, like we have in Victoria Avenue, but so does Victoria, B C. So there's lots of communities have similar names and it takes that interrogation with the caller to find the right city sometimes. Interestingly, the three hundred seventy incidents that Redstone received accounts for twenty-two percent of one thousand six hundred ninety-nine incidents dispatched within the C S R D. So nearly a full quarter of calls within the C S R D were for Redstone. Other cities would be Nicholson, Golden, Malquah. The other thirteen fire departments, I believe it is, in in the C S R D as well. So we're twenty-two percent. So that's a that's a fairly good chunk of that. Eighty percent of the calls were in Redstone municipality, five percent were within the C S R D for protection area. And fifteen percent of our calls were road rescue. The bottom section there highlighted in the yellow is the city's public fire protection classification. And so there's been no change since two thousand seventeen grading done by the fire generator survey that moved us up from seven to five. So seven to a five is an improvement. Just to be clear on that, ten would be the worst, one would be the best. So no change on that. Page ten recruitments and retention. This is always a difficult one. Attrition numbers continue to reflect a high turnover rate of volunteer firefighters, resulting in continuous efforts to recruit and train sufficient numbers of volunteer firefighters. The high turnover of volunteers leads to lower experience levels among the responders and limits maintenance training that can be provided to training resources. They're always being directed at the new firefighters, the new recruits. And we'll look at the numbers of new recruits versus resignations or attrition levels. But I would like to highlight that recruitment in itself is not a problem. We can always recruit new people. That's the easy part. The retaining them is the problem. It could be as simple as the society has changed how people react, behave, how they conduct their lives, what is important, what's not important, where people choose to put their time and efforts. And I think one of the things that has become quite apparent. Society, people are more mobile now. They can pick up and move to another new city or they can change jobs. And being a firefighter is like having a job, but you're not getting paid for it if you're volunteer. So that does have some impacts. So of the new recruits, fourteen new recruits in two thousand twenty-two, we picked up a hundred percent of the numbers that we wanted to. Unfortunately, throughout the year, we lost twelve, so twelve people resigned for various reasons. All personal reasons. I would like to highlight, however, that the resignations are not the same individuals that were recruited. There might be one or two in there. There that were recruited and it just didn't work out for it. And the bottom part, bottom part of that graph there, the yellow blue. The yellow is the expected number of volunteer turnout on a on a general alarm. So we're looking at our capacity is thirty-six members. So we should expect fifty percent of the membership at any point in time to be able to turn out. So that's be our expected eighteen. And from three two thousand eight to two thousand nineteen, it dropped slightly and it started to pick up again in two thousand twenty-two. So we're looking to get the average turnout at fires to come back up into that that eighteen mark. Again, more work is needed to improve. Page ten and eleven. Our department roster for years of service. So we've split it up into staff versus volunteers. There's a lot of years of service there. The the full-time department staff have combined one hundred and fifty-six years of service. And the volunteers have a combined seventy-three years of fire service. And if we look at the the years of service on the bottom section of the the page eleven there, sorry, just page eleven. The number of years of service for volunteers, there's only a few that have more than than five years of service. There's a whole lot that have two and one years of service at the end of two thousand twenty-two. So the intention is to to increase that retention so that we can start to build those years. And that's where I refer to the the level of experience being quite low as we have these turnovers. Again, more work to be done on that. Health and safety, very well done this year. We had fifteen twenty-four hour shift equivalent, so the current department or the career staff. And we had sixty-five weeks of of service for the volunteers, so that's quite good. We can't really do hours out of service for health and safety on the volunteers because they don't work regular hours. So we just took the chunk of weeks that they were unavailable due to surgeries or holidays, that sort of thing. Put it into weeks that so sixty-five weeks out of twenty-six firefighters, not too bad. Page twelve, Department firefighting apparatus fleet. Do we maintain a fire department fleet of special service vehicles? There's quite a number of vehicles on that list there. There's only a few that are actually certified and that have an impact on our fire transgrading. The number of columns there, if you take a look at that, I won't go into it in detail. All of our certified fire apparatus are currently in their first line, so that's zero to fifteen years. Engine one is about to go into its sixteen years in two thousand twenty-five, I believe. So it will be replaced with a new frontline engine and then engine one will go into second line service for an additional fifteen. On that topic, firefighting apparatus have a limited lifespan. Their maximum lifespan in a small community is twenty years. And as a medium community, we're looking at fifteen years for that first line, but we want to extend it up for another fifteen by putting it into a reserve status. So that has less of an impact on our fire transgrading, but it gives us an extra ten years service, total service life over a smaller community where they could, they only have the capacity for one or two engines or ladder. And so we can maximize the effectiveness of that vehicle over many years. So the replacement is depends on the type of vehicle it is, the reliability factors. Hopefully, we don't get a lemon, but it does happen. Fire fire apparatus are not always reliable. And then when fire apparatus go into being non-reliable, that does impact the grading, the transgrading as well. So there's there's more work to be done on that because we need to start keeping much better statistics and information on our vehicles. How much they're out for repairs, how much it's costing. You know, are they being utilized, that sort of thing.
So chief, are we putting money into reserve to replace these vehicles at this point? Or are we still doing the one-off when the time comes?
So there's there's a bit more information that that would be best for finance or Ms. Moore. However, the answer is yes, there is money going into reserves for replacement apparatus. One of the things that we'll find the inflation factors are going to have some impact to us in in that area. You know, we're looking at fire trucks that have gone from four, five, six hundred thousand to one point one. So it just depends on a lot of factors, but I've got some ideas on that too. So but just exactly how much is going in, what we do have, and that's all question for finance for Ms. Moore. Yeah, and then the last bit there are just, so this is a table from the F U S themselves. This is how they measure the city of Redstone and all fire departments in Canada. As for the performance levels and what their expectations are over many, many years of experience, they have learned how long a fire truck should be in services, frontline, second line and going into reserves. So they're an expert in this field as far as reducing costs and losses. And then there's just the rest of the pages are just pretty pictures of fire trucks. And we have heard what council has to say on electrification and environmental concerns. So there are electric fire apparatus are in development and they're proving to be quite effective. And a lot of the concerns that firefighters have about electric fire apparatus are becoming proven unfounded. I know Los Angeles has electric fire apparatus right now that's been in service for the first six months it was in service, it burned twenty liters of diesel to power the onboard generator that will charge batteries and run it if it runs out of batteries and a longer call. So that's that's quite a bit different than the two thousand gallons that they would normally have burned with their their regular diesel powered apparatus. So we're considering electric fire apparatus because I know council is interested in electrification of vehicles and equipment. So it's there are some opportunities to say.
So you've ordered a new Tesla for your your fire vehicle?
No. What's the what's the Ford Mach-E?
Gotcha.
But but I do hear that they are coming out with a full electric Ford Explorer and the not too distant features. That's all I have to highlight for you. If we take any questions, you may have.
And yeah, so the only question I have, I appreciate the report. Thank you, chief. So tender five, we still have that stored somewhere and is able to be utilized should you ever need it. Is that correct or or is that done?
That is corrected, is still in operation right now. It is twenty-four years old. It is exhibiting a number of issues. And the information provided there is that vehicle does not actually, it's not a listed vehicle, so it doesn't have the capabilities to have any contribution to the fire transgrading. So that's unfortunate, but we still have it because it does have a pump, it does have a water tank. It is still usable at this time, but at such time when we purchase the next apparatus or for our first due engine one will replace tender five. And so we'll kick tender five out the door because then now we would have an additional listed fire apparatus that would contribute towards a fire grading.
Okay, good. Thank you for that information. Counsel, any comments, Counselor Lynn?
Yeah, your worship through the chair. Just a comment, I know regarding volunteer retention, I know in the past council has been asked to take some steps that would help with that. So I think it was many years ago we started a program that offered discounted rec center passes or something like that. So anyways, my comment is if there is something that we could do to help, if you have any requests, please let us know.
Absolutely. Thank you for that. And again, recruiting is not usually the problem. It's it's keeping them unless we drop them in the door.
Yeah, for sure.
But if we have any ideas on that, we'll.
And Counselor Chair.
Just a couple of questions through the chair. Is there any viable, is sorry, is purchasing used vehicles a viable choice?
Potentially, there are opportunities to purchase used apparatus from time to time. You have to be very, very careful. I have done that before. I purchased used apparatus as well as a demo, sorry, a demonstrator apparatus. So a demonstrator is probably it's it's built and then it goes to trade shows and then they sell it after that year with extra miles on it and lots of people have kicked the tires and slammed the doors. So there are opportunities, they don't come up too often. And one of the things that you find is that the the price value per year of service remaining is usually the same as a new apparatus, but you have no warranties or guarantees that it's actually going to work.
So not so viable, okay?
It is viable, but there's no cost savings.
Gotcha.
It's it takes a number of years, months usually to to build a custom fire apparatus. So if if God forbid, one of our apparatus is in a in an accident that's rendered useless, we may need to go and buy, purchase a used apparatus while we go through the process of replacing it with a new one.
Perfect, big sense. My follow-up question is, in terms of your response time, what can be done to you know, increase our fast track response time to keep it in that average?
That's that's a difficult question to answer. I think there's a number of problematic areas. The number one is obviously going to be the staffing. If we're having to wait for another member to show up to go on medical calls, that's where you see the delay in that nine minute average is because we're waiting for that second guy to come out. We've received the calls, their trucks ready to go, we're going to wait for that second person. The other issue that we have on fires and alarms is going to be the distance from the station. So west side, our boundary on west side road up to the dam is a good twelve, thirteen minute drive. So west side, our boundary on west side road up to the dam is a good twelve thirteen minute drive. At. High speed, if you will, lights and sirens code three. The Reddlestoke Mountain Resort is a is a thirteen minute drive on a good day without traffic. Dry roads, no snow, no ice. So the the more development that is happening, the further away from the station. Let's say the the south side of the Four Street Bridge. The more calls, so law of averages, the more buildings that are further away from the the main center of town. Creates more calls, which is going to continue to increase those numbers. So this is where the foresight to plan for a satellite second station in the Arrow Heights area. Becomes that critical factor to getting that crew to those residences in that meaningful timeframe. Five minutes and twenty seconds doesn't sound like a very long time. It sounds like a very rapid response, but. Try holding your breath for five minutes. If you're trapped in a in a building that's full of smoke and you can't breathe. Five minutes is a long time. If you're having cardiac arrest, same thing, five minutes is a long time. So that's where this this number comes to play. So it's just, it's a numbers thing.
No, I appreciate the answer. It's something to look forward to in the future.
Resources.
Any other questions or comments, Councilor Lino?
Your worship, I just wanted to make a comment in that one of the most valuable things that I learned. Or relevant things that I learned regarding the fire department in my time on council before. Is covered in part here, but I just wanted to highlight it for councils. I know Council of State and herself lots of experience in fire, so you'll already know this. But this PFPC rating, this insurance rating that we get is important to understand. We get assessed by outside body that looks at, you know, your capabilities, your medical, everything, the equipment you have. And assigns you a number and that number is associated with the insurance rates. So long story short, if we have a low number, your insurance rate is going to be higher. So it really comes down to a matter of being prepared and having the equipment and being staffed. And if you don't, you're just going to pay, and which you have to pay for. But if you don't, you are also going to have to pay, everyone's paying more for insurance. So it's really about finding the balance in there with with that system and and, you know, having the the chief. You know. Adjust all of these variables and focus on all of them to keep that to keep that number as low as possible to keep insurance rates down. So important consideration.
Yes, I could just add to that. Absolutely. The the better your fire underwriters survey grading is for the city or areas of the city. The more savings that particularly commercial lines of personal lines enjoy discounts on that. When the cost of insurance and I'll refer to that as the return on investment. And so exactly as you said, Councilor Orlando, is if the cost of insurance is going to go up two hundred dollars. The cost of increasing the resources of fire departments, only a hundred and fifty dollars to stabilize that insurance cost. Where do you want to spend the money? And so, yes, it's a balance of equipment, resources, personnel, all of that sort of stuff. So again, lots more work to do in that area and I hope we look for it.
Well, I appreciate it. Thank you for any of you that are paying homeowners insurance or commercial insurance. Every year it goes up significantly and they're looking for more loopholes, in my words, and not theirs. To mitigate to not having to pay. So if you want to have full coverage and making sure we have a. Valid and comprehensive fire partners. Thank you for that. Counselor State.
Yes, thank you, your worship. Just on the, I know Chief DeRosi mentioned it earlier in regards to the medical response times. The nine minutes and forty seconds, it's a little alarming, as I'm sure you would agree. Something that I remember from my days of being a medic is for every minute that CPR isn't in progress in cardiac arrest. Your chances of probability of survival go down by ten percent. So you look at nine minutes and forty seconds, the probability of survival is.
Very small, right?
Very small, yeah. So if there's anything that we can do on council to to help better those times, I'm sure we don't be in agreement to.
Appreciate that. Yeah, we are working towards solutions and hopefully we'll have some stuff in place. Thank you. Thank you for the comment.
Any other comments? Saying none, thank you, chief. I appreciate your time and your report. You're welcome. Thank you. All right, we are going to move on to park structure, culture, powerhouse, room, park concept plan. Mr. Nato, you have a presentation.
Yes, your worship. No, she's. Thank you, your worship and council. So today I have a short little presentation for you just to go over the powerhouse road park concept plan. So I'll talk a little bit about the background on how we got to where we are today. An update on the consultation process. Some, I'll go over some guiding principles that were used to draft the concept plan, present the plan and then go over some of the next steps. So just a quick overview of the site. The park site is city owned land located at the end of Powerhouse Road. It's adjacent to the Illacoy River and to the east of Bridge Creek. It's accessible accessible via the Green Belt and Powerhouse Road. So how we got to where we are today in twenty twenty two, council adopt the Parks and Rec Master Plan. The plan sets out a vision for the city's parks and the plan also includes a list of recommendations for future parks. Establishing the Powerhouse Road Park Site has a community park was identified, has a priority recommendation. And within that recommendation, a list of potential amenities was also identified. And those amenities were identified through the community consultation process that we undertook with the parks plan. So building off of that recommendation, we initiated the consultation process. So we started off with a department, city department meeting in October where we had all relevance. Departments included, we discussed the potential of a concept plan. We identified some site constraints, some opportunities and some different site servicing options. After that meeting in November, we held individual stakeholder meetings. And we worked with the stakeholders that were identified in the Parks and Rec Master Plan. So that included the local food initiative, the Paddle Sport Association, the Frisbee Golf Society. The McPherson Dog Park Society and the Local Food Initiative. So after the individual stakeholder meetings, we worked with a consultant to draft a concept plan based on the feedback we received. Once we had that concept plan draft, we took it back to a group stakeholder meeting. Further refinements were made. We met with a couple of the user groups to go over some logistics with their projects. Reflect, refine the plan again. Took it back to the city departments. And now presenting it to council. So I identified some of the guiding principles that were in the O C P and the Parks and Rec Master Plan. I'm not going to read them, but they are there for you to review. And we considered all of that when developing the draft concept plan. The intent is to keep the space as natural as possible. It's not going to be a manicured pristine park. That's not the intent of the development. We're trying to preserve the natural area and work with the uses that. Are conducive to the site and not going to deteriorate from the environmentally sensitive areas or anything like that. So it is more of a rustic looking park. So this is the draft concept plan before you. Some of the highlights of the plan include, you'll see the dog park area. So the site that selected for the dog park area is more natural setting. This is something that the consultants raised with us, that that seems to be the trend these days. Having the dog parks and forested areas, the intent would be that the entire area would be fenced. Within that site. We'd have water stations, benches, garbage receptacles, that kind of thing. However, the concept plan, I should stress, the concept plan doesn't highlight the individual development of each amenity. Those will be addressed with further site planning that will be specific to that use. This is just illustrating how the park will be laid out. So the details of each amenity will be in a separate site plan. So we'll have a more formal entrance area. Can you guys see my cursor? No, okay. A more formal entrance area. And then along the dog park, you'll see that blue structure there. That's meant to be at some point in time, a storage facility facility for paddle sports. You may wonder why it's located closer to the road than closer to the water. And that was in consultation with the group. They wanted the site to be as accessible as possible. And we are limiting vehicle access to the parking area. So vehicles cannot drive all the way into the water area. So for them, it made more sense to have the storage facility closer to the parking areas so that they can easily. Unload and load up their. Kayaks or whatever they use when they're traveling to other areas. So they will have to want to walk all the way and drag them out. We have. Informal gravel parking areas. You'll see to the east of the multi-use path, there's a seating, proposed seating area, outdoor seating area. That was identified with a lot of the stakeholders as well. They just wanted a place where they could hold a training session or. Educational workshops. So that was an area that we thought would be suitable. And then the boxing club. So in our conversations with the boxing club, they, they're really a small group. They don't have any vision for the future. They don't have any plans to expand or to grow or to seek out other areas. So for them, they want to remain in this space as long as possible. And when the time comes that they have to leave, they will just leave. And don't have any plans for the future. So we've left them there in the current state. We do propose that at some point in time through different phases that we might see the the need to construct a washing facility. Having said that, the type, it will not be the washing facility that you see in other park spaces. It will be more organic in nature in terms of, you know, something that you would see at a road pull off. That type of washing facility. With the food production gardens outlined in green, they've discussed the potential for a wash base, wash base station. And storage sheds as well, and they will have vehicle access to the garden site. And the Frisbee Duck Golf. Course, that's really the anchor in the whole park. So we've had show a little bit of an expansion area for them, but for the most part, they are in their space. And they've worked really well with the other user groups. I just want to highlight that. They were very willing to. Adjust their course layout to accommodate all the other users to ensure that everyone could fit in the space that they needed. And then we have the Paddle Paddle Sport Association. They have right now two informal access points to the water. So the intent would be to improve those existing water points. At some point in the future, they have more work to do on that in terms of reaching out to. The different freshwater society of B C, the ministry, getting all that, those approvals coordinated. So we have more work to do with them, but they are identified on this map as well.
So Mr. Nato, they go out and do that work? It's not incumbent upon you to have to. Get all the permits in place or is that something they should be doing?
Yes, working in conjunction with me, I will support them in that process, but I think has. The society themselves. Doing that background work will help us in assisting them.
Perfect, thank you.
Do you do, does anyone have any questions on the draft concept plan? This would probably be a good time.
Thanks, I appreciate it. Through your worship, I'm just curious, is the Boston Club building a municipally owned building?
Yes.
If the viability of them is kind of up in the air, are there any? Improvements or upgrades that building that are planned for future use?
We, we have not formally discussed that yet. There are some plans that we've mulled around, but they are not reflected in financial plan yet. So that is probably something we'll have more conversations about in twenty twenty four.
Okay, I appreciate that. I just want to say this this looks great. Long time coming. Super excited for it, so thank you.
And they are going to leave that one tree in the center of that dog park for your dog.
Okay. Hope so.
Because the new washroom, sorry.
Okay.
You want a new washroom for someone?
I said, I think that is the new washroom. Quick question in regards to the paddle sports. Has the. I might be using the wrong term, but in previous discussions, I think at the C S R D. The topic of zebra muscles being transferred, has has that been considered with this and like the ability to? Have the paddle sports rinse off their equipment so there isn't a risk of transmitting any kind of. Non-desirable from from one body weight to another for for waterways?
Yeah, that's a very good point. That is something that did not have, that did not come up in the conversation, but definitely I can. Yeah, I think as we get further into the. Planning with this group, that those conversations will come up. And maybe it's as simple as adding something near the storage facility, just to help.
It could just be like a spigot that people can rinse off their equipment.
Yeah, yeah, for sure.
Just something to think about. And again, I don't know the threats exactly, so I couldn't make a recommendation. But I know that that's been a topic that's come up from other communities that have, you know, water. You know, water access, water, you know, recreational activities, so.
Okay.
Counselor Lino. I, uh, source up through the chair, I'm wondering, the the boat storage facility, how is that going to be administered? Is there cost recovery, that kind of stuff? Who's responsible for deciding who and what goes in there? How many spaces?
Yeah, so that is something we need to discuss further with the Paddle Sport Association. Those details will follow when we do operating and maintenance agreements. Right now, we're just focusing on securing a site that's that works with their organization. But they are aware that we're we're going to be having those conversations.
Follow up, counsel?
Yeah, I just, I think that's a key. So I know I got a kayak at the side of my house, so I'll move it somewhere else. I'm sure a lot of people do, so I'm wondering if it's going to get full really fast and.
Are you a member of the society?
No, I would, I probably wouldn't put it there, but I'm sure that the thought went through your head. And then not, so just wondering, I think there might be a lot of demand for that. And it might just concern about it becoming cost intensive if it has to be administered by city. City staff and I had, your worship, I wanted to follow up. The, I believe the dog park fence is on the budget for this year. Is that correct? I noticed a hundred thousand dollar line item.
Yeah, so in the staff report. So through the R M I funding program, we were able to secure seventy five thousand for the off-leash dog park. And then twenty five thousand or fifty thousand for the disc golf course. There was some confusion on the allocation of funds for twenty twenty three when we were doing the budgeting process. And. The off-leash. The funds should have been for the disc golf course because they're further ahead in the planning process. Yeah, so I think the director, interim director of finance will speak to that at some point. I did see them one of her reports. Yeah, yeah.
Also straight here. Just going back to the topic of the boxing club. I was wondering if there'd been any consultation with other stakeholders, such as, I know we have a a community of Brazilian Jiu-Jitsu and also karate. So I mean, those are two other uses that could, you know, kind of share that space, so. So I mean, those are two other uses that could, you you know, kind of share that space, so just something to.
The space is very small.
Yes.
And needs significant upgrades. So I think the conversation between those three groups could probably happen, but not convinced that this is the most suitable location as is for that.
Okay.
Partnership. Um, and we did not reach out to them as part of this project because they weren't identified through the park's master plan. So once we release this out to the public for comment and feedback, um, we'll review all the input that we've received. And if something else comes up like that, then we might have to just revisit what we're doing. So we've left it kind of open to that, um, yeah.
And so just a bit of history on that boxing club. This was kind of their last um place to put it. It was probably something we would have used this building for storage or something. Uh, they were in another place where they didn't have any choice, so came to us and and Lori and her group basically said, we could do that for a period of time. So just so you're aware, it's not like they're transferred permanent, as we've said, as already said.
That, that was completely the situation. They had nowhere else to go, so we just let them use it.
All right, any other questions? Counselor Lucian?
Uh, yeah, thank you, Mayor Souls. Uh, just with the washing facility, is the plan for it to be a four seasons or would it be closed during winter time?
Uh, we have not got that far in the planning process yet. So we just illustrated the need and the potential location for the washing facility. And as we get into that phase, we'll have more conversation on budgeting, operating and maintenance and um seasonal use versus all around use.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you, Ms. Penano.
Okay, and then next steps?
Yes, please.
Just give you a quick update on next step. So hoping to get your feedback and if there's anything I can incorporate into the plan, I'd like to do that before it goes out to the public. Um, based on our conversation today, it's that sounds like it's okay to be released to the public. So if that is the case, I would like to release it to the public on Talk Rebel Stope along with a survey tomorrow to get the community's input. Following that engagement process, we'll review all the comments and consider everything that's been brought forward. Um, then I'll prepare a final report, a concept, a final concept plan along with implementation strategy and capital cost estimates for council consideration. And then the last step, um, anticipating the implementation strategy will be a phased approach. So the next step would be to work with the user groups to develop operating and maintenance agreements. Um, detailed construction drawings and actually initiate the construction. And um, just to highlight that the disc golf society is um quite advanced in their planning. They've done a lot of research. They've secured funding from C V T in the amount of twenty five thousand. Um, so they are ready to move forward with their project and I'd like to support them this summer to get that going. So they've already been working on a new design for the park, um, sourced out different infrastructure that we've been working with them on. So we most likely will see that amenity improved this summer.
Yeah, perfect. I mean, so everybody's comfortable with that scenario, that's what I said, forward, that it can go into the public for their input. Any comments?
Uh, yeah, yeah, I know that sounds great. I just want to make one last comment, your worship. Uh, uh, I'm, uh, have been in contact with uh one of the proponents of the disc golf uh for years now and uh advising them on how to negotiate the city process. So like the, the markers there got made in my backyard now for the current course. So I think that's a real success story and in just uh being able uh to have this initiative from young people who want to see improvements in their community, who have access to uh civic uh um parks recreation thing. And and I think it's really important as a community that we recognize those things and see that enthusiasm and uh uh, find a way to guide it to fruition. So I'm really excited to see this.
Any other comments? Good. Thank you, Ms. Penano. Counsel, you have your head up. Sorry, I didn't see that.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Souls. Um, yeah, just a couple of questions, had one there before. Uh, so I forget which counselor it was, but on the um four season use question, uh, that's an interesting one cause I think that's pretty, uh, pretty big impact. Um, I was thinking about the dog park, what the public's expectations might be. Um, cause if that's a four season dog park with snow, uh, that we're going to be, need some pretty high fences or or something. Um, so that's, that's an interesting sort of di- dynamic. Um, the other thing on the dog park act aspect, um, I, I think, but I'm not positive. I don't have it in front of me uh on council priorities. I think the dog park was on there and it seemed like the, you know, one of the easy wins. Um, but uh, I, I, I think I'm understanding how that funding is, but um, there may be some alignment that needs to be done uh to uh get to the timeline. Um, it's notable that, you know, a lot of people point out that we're one of the few communities that doesn't have a dog park. Um, the, um, and then, yeah, and then Lori, just thank you, thank you very much for the report and for doing this work and getting on it. Uh, it's exciting. It's exciting to have it at the new, uh, you know, in the early in the term of this council that we'll be able to see some tangible things happening um fairly soon in this, you know, in our term. Um, the question on the timeline, so you had that one last slide for the next steps. And not necessarily right now, but uh it would be good to see, uh, you know, some reasonable timelines around that. I know there's going to be some shifts, uh, but to see exactly when those, those points happen, I'd like to see that at some point. Um, that's my comments, uh, Mayor Souls, and once again, thank you to the Recreation Director.
Thank you. Uh, any comment, Mr. Nell?
Sure, thank you, your worship. The timeline will be reflected on the Talk Rebel Stope page. I didn't have it in the slide, but um we will be updating that timeline with target dates.
Okay, great, thank you, appreciate that. All right, um, is okay, dive into the next one, you need a break. A break, okay, we're going to take a five minute break, uh.
Can you?
Just mute, yeah. So let's be done.
Let's be, source?
Let's be done.
Yeah.
All right, uh, so counsel, we're ready to fly at it. So we have a short-term rental update. Uh, Mr. Simon, you have an update for us regarding that?
Uh, thank you, your worship. You have myself as well as uh Mr. Mark Coffio. I want to make sure that I'm getting his last name correct there. No presentation for council today. We have the information as contained in your package. And we are here to answer any questions. Want to double check to make sure. So the first one that we have on the books for you today is just a general update. And then the next report is in response to a notice of motion. With respect to the general update, just want to, I guess, throw a bit of a caveat. You'll see it detailed in the report, but tracking of short-term rental business license data, enforcement data. It's something that is constantly in flux. So when you're looking through the report, you'll see some of the challenges and the opportunities as noted in there. And one of the challenges is sometimes people will show that they're compliant through the software that we're using to track compliance rates. And then the next week, they might not be compliant. They switched advertising for a long-term rental and then in a week, switch back to a short-term rental. So it makes it a, a target that you're constantly chasing that's in flux. So just wanted to make that note for council because it is a number that is constantly going to vary. And to kind of give you an example of the variance that we're looking at, you know, these stats were pulled from around beginning of February. It's a snapshot in time. And when we went and reexamined some of the stats yesterday, instead of a seventy percent compliance rate on paper, we're at about a fifty nine percent compliance rate. So you can see where the numbers are going to constantly be in flux and it's completely dependent on the operators. And it doesn't involve complex investigations from the bylaw enforcement team. And uh, Mr. Mark Coffio can certainly speak more to that if council has any questions. Um, but staff are working diligently to track this as best we can. It's a resort municipality, it's a lucrative business. And we're, we're working within the existing resource capacity that we have to try and track and enforce both proactively and reactively on the short-term rental front as best as we can. So if there's any questions that council has, you have myself and Mr. Mark Coffio here to, to help support and answer questions.
Any questions, counsel? Any concerns at this point? I'm a little, uh, you know, a little shocked, uh, Mr. Simon, just that it's, uh, this thing is in flux from seventy percent, fifty nine percent. And that kind of tells me that people are doing what they can to uh get around our uh short-term rental bylaw to uh, to do what's best for them and it's not a concern for the community at all. So that's a little upsetting, but it is, as you said, very lucrative. So people are going to do what they're going to do. Any comments or questions from council uh to either Mr. Simon regarding the rental, short-term rental or uh to Mr. Mark Coffio regarding bylaw enforcement? Counselor Stapenhurst, do you have a question?
Yes, sir, thank you. Um, through the chair to uh Mr. Simon. Originally, how many short-term rentals did we have on the market? Or like how, like at, at the start of this problem, do we, do we have a, a kind of a rough idea of how many numbers we had on the mark, like?
Uh, through your worship, Counselor Stapenhurst, the number's been in flux over the last year and a half since uh the city has been tracking. The city's been on and off with its use of the host compliance software, which is the, the only reputable software that's out there to track listings. And it would be in flux between a hundred and fifty and and three hundred and twenty is what you're looking at. So again, it's challenging because it's always a snapshot in time, but I would say, and and sometimes it does look a bit beyond municipal boundaries for those that are on the, on the boundary of the city. Um, but yeah, you're probably looking at just over three hundred for uh what the maximum amount of listings would be.
Have a follow-up, uh, counsel?
Yes, um, thank you, your worship, through the chair to Mr. Simon. Sort of the reason, like, one of the things that came up in, in, in the conversation the other day was like the, the cost benefit analysis of, of, you know, like when we're looking, like if, if I'm looking at this report correctly, it looks like we're, we spent, we're spending between a hundred and twenty-three thousand to a hundred and seventy-eight thousand per year on enforcement. So when I'm just kind of like trying to get an idea of like, how effective are we? How many units are being either A, put into, to enforcement, B, converting to long-term? And so like what's, you know, again, like what's the cost of benefit analysis? What's the, you know, what's the conversion rate, like what's, you know? Does that make sense where I'm coming from?
Is there any comment, Mr. Simon, regarding how much money is proposed to be used or how much money's been used at this point? Uh, are we able to track that, I guess?
Through your worship to Counselor Stapenhurst, and I guess to all of council in general, we're trying to track amount of staff. We're trying to track amount of staff time that's dedicated to this when it comes down to the cost, right? And we're using very crude numbers, 105 bucks an hour for staff time, which would vary. Is it myself at a certain rate that's doing that work? Is it one of our clerks? Is it a by law enforcement officer? Is it a planner? There's some weeks where we get minimal inquiries with respect to short term rental. And then there's some weeks where we have multiple individuals from the city that are involved in a meeting from someone who has complained about by law enforcement on them or someone who is looking for that path of compliance. So it is something that is in constant flux. If council is looking for staff to keep a detailed log of the specific hours that we're spending on short term rental, that's certainly something that can be undertaken. Whether or not that's, that's the best use of staff's time is, is another question. It's one of these things that the city, we have to be around and available to answer general inquiries from the public. And short term rental is a complex subject that we do get many inquiries on. And it does require substantial follow up. So tracking down to the hour, the amount of time that you're spending is going to be something that will be in flux constantly, especially can be seasonal too. I see our director of finances on as well. So she might have a little bit more to add on to that.
This more comment, and then I'll go to Mr. Counselor Cherry.
Thank you. And yes, through your worship and, and the report following the update, I did try to highlight the total revenue and total estimated costs for the city. And I would like to reiterate that they are estimates. We haven't seen a full year yet of the total costs and staff time to enforce and monitor short term rentals. So this is what we've come up at the moment. We are still having properties come into compliance and pay for an annual license. And with that, we will earn additional revenue. However, at this time, we have estimated based off of $105 per hour for staff. This includes anything from wages and benefits, office supplies, equipment, software support, vehicle usage, to charge out per hour per staff member. And at this time, we're not seeing the cost significantly more than the revenue that we've seen to date for this fiscal year. So.
And answer your question, counselor?
Would she might repeat that last little part just real quick?
Sure. Is more comment to, to just repeat the last part of your statement?
Of course. At this time, we are not seeing a significant amount of costs over what we have currently received in revenue for short term rental licenses year to date for 2023.
Got it. Thank you. All right. Counselor Cherry?
Thanks, your worship. Just a heads up, I'll be asking numerous questions throughout all this process. My next one is through, you said that you mentioned there, Paul, sorry. You mentioned there is 150, 320 STRs right now. So there's a bit of an influx. How many of those are licensed?
Through your worship to Counselor Cherry, I'm just looking through the report right now. See how many licenses we've issued. I believe we had it in there. So we've only had 11 license applications come in since we've started the proactive and reactive enforcement. In terms of the specific numbers, sorry, I'm bouncing back and forth between the two reports here. I think Ms. Moore might have a quicker answer than I do.
It's just looking for a total number of who's in compliance at this moment. And then I see the number 11 for ones that have come into a compliance in the.
Ms. Moore, do you have any comment on how many people have, are illegal?
Through your worship, at the moment, there are 63 business licenses for short term rental and 53 licenses for B and Bs.
All right. Thank you. That's your question, counsel.
It does. Thank you.
Counselor Orlando?
I just, your worship, just a quick follow up question through the chair. Out of those licenses, how many are under the old zoning, the R zoning spot?
Through your worship, I'd have to verify because right now it's kind of a manual check on the business licenses against the zoning. We have, I believe it's 30 properties that were spot zoned somewhere in the vicinity, 27 to 30. And you probably have at least 15 to 20 licenses that have been issued for them to be operating.
Just to quote another follow up question, under the spot zoning process, there was a requirement for those who had attained that zoning to continually operate that and that they could lose that zoning or it could be rescinded if they were not, for example, taking out a business license. I'm wondering if that has happened or what the process for that is?
Through your worship to Counselor Orlando, that is the first I'm hearing of that process and the intent. I haven't seen anything in the previous resolutions that were passed or the previous staff reports. If that was the case, once you grant zoning, it's a permanent change. The owner would need to come in and make an application or the city would need to make the decision to effectively downzone their property, which could open up a whole host of complications. One of the things that it does, and regardless of whether or not you have a business license issued, the rules for becoming lawful, nonconforming under the provincial legislation, so a grandfathered, you have to show intent of use. So even if the city stripped away the spot zoning of these properties, as long as someone can demonstrate the reasonable satisfaction of a court, that they have the intent to use it on a short term basis, which what the court would deem to show intent could be pretty minimal because it is still a residential use. That individual could carry on as a lawful nonconformious. So even if that was something that the city was looking to undertake, it will create a situation of grandfathered properties.
Your worship, through the chair. I mean, this was very clearly presented to council at the time, that if the use, if it was not being used and marker for that was not paying for licenses, because we're talking about licenses and costs here, then that, that designation would be revoked. Now, I respect what you're saying. I'm not an expert in the nitty gritty details of these things, but I would appreciate if there was some clarification on that because that was presented by staff of different staff at the time. So I'm very clear that that was the intent and that was what was presented to council. Yeah.
Through your worship to Counselor Orlando, certainly something that we can dig into a little bit more. Just to give council a bit of an example, one of the lawful nonconforming uses that creeps up a lot is mobile homes on properties where mobile home isn't a permitted use. And the courts have ruled that even something as minimal as having screw piles on a property shows intent of use for it to be carried on as a lawful nonconformious. So just to give you an example of where these things ultimately land in the courts. And to be fully transparent with council, we really can't give you a 100% answer on that until it is something that would be tested in the courts. And I, my professional view of it is that the intent of use is, it can be minimal, right? So it's a, it's a tricky situation to try and retract that zoning once it's already been granted and it would likely cause some, some challenges.
And so I'm just going to make comment because I understand I was sitting around council table when, when Counselor Orlando was, and I remember that comment being made. But also feel or think somewhere in that my memory was like, if these weren't run in a, in a proper manner, that council had the ability to revoke zoning. So if it was a consistent problem with this spot zone property, that we would have the ability to roll back that zoning. And so I'm just going to ask, I'm not asking for an answer now, but clarification on the ability to do that, either through the process that Counsel Orlando was stating, or the fact that if it was a property that continually run afoul of bylaw for noise complaints or parking, whatever the case may be, just some clarification, if you wouldn't mind. Counselor Palmer, you have your hand up?
Yeah, I'll just weigh in a little bit on this conversation. I, I remember that statement or those statements being made when the spot zoning was being considered, you know, considered being actively pursued. And I, I remember thinking to myself saying, oh yeah, that's, that's pretty loaded. I, I, you know, from my, my experience, I can certainly concur with the planner saying that that's a pretty loaded gun. If you're going to do a, a force a down zoning, it has been done, but it's very, very rare and it's fraught with problems. And, and so, you know, the, even, even if staff go and say, well, did, you know, previous staff make those statements? The real important thing is not so much what staff said in the past. It's okay, what can you actually do? And I, I would concur that that would be an extremely problematic approach to do a down zoning on, on that, from my understanding anyway. Thank you, Mayor Souls.
Great. Thanks for your comment. Counselor Cherry?
Thanks, your worship. Just in addition, I remember this meeting you guys were all a part of. I was watching it. I can echo that. That's how I understood it as well. And then add in addition that of the other 14 resort municipalities, many of them have the same threat of downgrading or losing your license for multiple compliance issues.
Right. Appreciate that. Any other comments or questions regarding short term rental? Counselor, Chair, yeah? Counselor Stapenhurst, my apologies.
Yes, sir. Just looking here, the next step showed that this is going to be reviewed in October of 2023, I think, with the support of council. What I would like to, you know, propose is that when that comes back in front of council, we look at this, you know, we look at the funds that we could generate from OAPs, the MRDT tax. It just came to my attention the other day that legislation has changed with regards to MRDT funds and those can now be used to, to build more affordable housing. So if that is the case, it would be an interesting, you know, I, I think we need to look at this from like a business standpoint of like, what's the best use of these funds? Is it through enforcement or is it through, you know, you know, a, a combination of enforcement and business licenses, OAPs, collect the funds and build more affordable housing? So I think we need to, you know, it'd be great to have that kind of a presentation in October. And then we could look at, you know, what's, what's the best business development plan? How can we use these funds? What result in the most housing? Whether it's, you know, regulation of short term rentals and converting those like the non licensed short term rentals into long term, if that's the case. Or is it using those funds to build more available housing?
Just to clarify, Counselor Stapenhurst, you're asking for a cost analysis with the current regulations? Or if we're looking at allowing more STRs and how those funds could be used?
It would be, well, you, you would have to compare both now, wouldn't you? Right? Like using, sorry, through the chair to, to Counselor Chair. You kind of have to use both comparisons. So the model that we're currently using, are we going to continue to use that model? And in which case, what have, what have, what's, what's been the result? As opposed to if we were to maybe loosen, loosen the grip a little bit and allow more licenses, more. And then looking at the funds from the OAPs, from the fund from OAP and the MRDT. But I think the other thing that we have to factor into this conversation is the expansion of the ability to collect funds from not only the city, but from the surrounding CSRD. So because I, you know, as I'm sure you're well aware, Counselor Chair, you know, a lot of these, you know, short term rentals operate outside of the city where they're not being enforced by city regulation. So if we can start collecting the funds from those, then potentially, you know, we, we have a the revenue to, to fund a lot more available housing.
So there will be some barriers within the MRDT tax and the online platform. So Mr. Simon, so when we adopted the short term rental policy, I thought we're going to go a year and look at it and see what the stats were and see how it, you know, kind of where we were at, what was the, the feeling in the community, positive, negative, whatever the case may be. And, and so I'm just going to get you to weigh in on, on that. And I'm going to ask another question, but let's, let's just get you to weigh in on that. And then I'll, I'll ask another question. Just more for thought process as we move along.
So to your worship and through your worship to all of council, my professional opinion on the matter is as a community and the way the regulations were drafted back in April, 2022, was always intended to be revisited. Everyone recalls the original regulations where let's expand it community wide, permanent resident onsite operator requirements. Council had reservations with that. We said, okay, let's try it out in a small subset of the community, 59 properties adjacent to Hay Road. And let's reevaluate this within 18 months to see how things are going. As a community, we are going to need to identify what is our philosophy that we're trying to achieve with short term rentals. Are we looking at this as something that is going to provide a mortgage helper for people that are living within the community? Are we looking at it as something that we want to be overly restrictive of, which is reflective of the current regulations to preserve long term rental within the community? And what are the opportunities and trade offs with each of those? If we are going to take a overly restrictive approach as a community, then we need to be prepared to dedicate substantial time and resources towards enforcement of those regulations. If we want to create a path to compliance where there's some trade offs and you need to have someone living onsite, then we need to examine those zoning regulations and figure out how we can ultimately convey that to the community and get whether or not the community is supportive of that. So I think as we do look at reexamining these regulations, determining what that philosophy is right at the onset is very important. And, you know, current staff came on to the short term rental game a little bit late. And one of the challenges that I see in retrospect with how it was originally rolled out is it tried to do everything at once. It tried to increase opportunities for tourism while preserving long term rental market. Well, sometimes from a policy perspective, those might be at odds with each other. And I think as a council, as a community, when we revisit this, we are going to need to say, what are we trying to achieve with these regulations and what options do we have to those ends to implement something new? Or to build upon what we've already started?
Thank you for that comment. And further comment I was going to make is more geared towards housing and I'll, I'll pick that conversation up on you at some point, Mr. Simon. Counselor Cherry?
Thanks, your worship. Through to whoever could answer this. Paul just reminded me. When is the adjudication process? What's the timeline on that coming into effect?
Do we have any feedback from the French government on that at this point?
No, so through your worship to Counselor Cherry, I have sent off the recommendation that you guys made to the ministry. Haven't heard anything back yet. So as soon as they do, that's when we can proceed with building the bylaws. So it's kind of been a holding pattern until.
Should be a longer process than we expect.
And we're the third, CSRD's done it, Golden's done it, and we'll be the third and the final black trifecta.
Well, Simon Arden's doing it. So everybody's looking at the same thing. It just hasn't been, I don't think anyone's finalized it.
That's, that was one expression. Do you know anticipated timelines to build the bylaws once we hear back? Three months, six months, two years, really?
Probably six months from when we hear back.
Okay.
I think staff could make it a priority if that's what council chose.
Perfect.
So for lucky, all of this could come together in one.
That's the goal.
Any other comments around the table regarding short term rental update?
Hi, Counselor Orlando? Hi, just one question through the chair, your worship. This is just an informational report. It looks like the next item is more calling for input, but just to double check, staff is not requesting any direction from council resolution at this time?
Correct. Correct, Mr. Simon? Yeah.
Reword, that's correct.
All right. Last one last time. Any more comments, short term rental? Thank you, Mr. Simon and Ms. Moore. Appreciate your help on that. Business licensing fees charges for bed and breakfast, short term rentals. So just regarding that, Counselor Cherry, you had some questions regarding that. But Mr. Simon, any, do you have a report or any comments you want to make on that before I go to council?
Through your worship, no formal presentation. Staff did the best they could to respond to the notice of motion and provide some detail in the report with respect to, you know, how much it's currently costing for administration of the short term rental regulations, as well as give council an idea of some comparative analysis with other municipalities in how much their business licensing fees are. And again, myself and Ms. Moore are here to answer any questions that you may have.
So just elaborating on what we've got in our report, Counselor Cherry, you want to make a statement or comments?
Yeah, the goal of bringing this forward was because our bed and breakfast business licenses are historically low. They're actually the lowest out of all 14 resort municipalities. You know, except for Belmont, who has maybe a thousand people in their town. Many of the resort municipalities actually have them at the same cost of their STR fees. As it's, this is the only way to have any sort of cost recovery as STRs and B and Bs. STRs and B and Bs are not taxed commercially. Um on top of the report that Paul's given, I've called all the other resort municipalities and seeing how they have a cost recovery program through their business licenses, uh Tofino and Uclu that uh are two that are very aggressive and are currently uh raising their fees year over year. Yuki's uh having another chat with council about looking at that. They're, you know, between four fifty and five hundred dollars a year, plus a hundred and sixty-three or a hundred and twenty-five per bedroom on top of that. Uh interesting enough, some of the other municipal resort municipalities have broken the fees down in different ways where you have to pay for your fire inspection, your building inspection, uh on top of your business license fee and then an annual per bedroom fee as well. I don't think it's appropriate that the average taxpayer is picking up the burden for our low business fees with bed and breakfasts. I'd like to see that increase. I was hoping to have a conversation with this data uh around the table with everybody to see how everybody else felt.
Okay, so um you want to have that conversation now or do you want this to be a separate meeting in dealing with this sort of thing? Uh Miss Moore, do you have any comments um from a financial perspective?
Uh through your worship, uh my only comment is that the fee structure is quite um significantly different right now between short term rental and bed and breakfast. And I think uh working with Mr. Simon and by law enforcement to understand uh how much time they are spending on B and Bs versus short term rental uh will help us identify what we could charge for uh bed and breakfast that would be reasonable from a cost recovery point of view.
So uh Counselor Cherry, if I suggested that we gave staff, uh you know, a couple of months to kind of look into this thing before we have this discussion, would you be in agreeance with that? And then, Mr. Simon, I'm sorry, I see your hand up. Would you like to weigh in before I go to that question?
Uh to your worship and or through your worship to all of council, I do just want to build on what Miss Moore said. Um one thing that we are seeing is an increase in the number of bed and breakfast license applications as people are are now accepting that they might not be able to operate a traditional short term rental and they have opted for a bed and breakfast. So I would concur um that the staff time it takes to review a bed and breakfast license application and the subsequent enforcement of bed and breakfast is starting to blur a little bit more with short term rentals as people are looking at that as an alternative option when they are not permitted to do short term rental. So I just wanted to provide that little piece of uh information for all of council.
Okay, uh Counselor Palmer, uh I'll go back to Counselor Cherry for follow up, then I'm going to go to Counselor Palmer. And then uh back to staff before I go to other counselors.
Thanks your worship. This is actually one of the reasons why I brought this up as B and Bs are kind of what's being used as a scapegoat for people that are uh non compliant STRs.
Right.
A little bit of pressure. And we've fallen way behind the mark on costs. Uh you know, I could, I, you could pick a town right now or the fourteen men's men's resort municipalities, I can give you how much they charge. For example, Roslyn is a hundred and twenty-five dollars to two hundred and fifty uh for a bed and breakfast, plus an annual fee of a hundred and fifty dollars to be part of the annual tourism Roslyn Association.
Counsel Palmer, you have your hand up.
Uh thank you, Mary Souls, and uh thank you uh to Counselor Cherry. Um uh you've brought this up before and I I was aware of some components of it, uh but you're certainly convincing to me of there's more urgency behind that, especially with the planners' comments. The the blurriness between uh the uh short term rental and a bare bed and breakfast is I I guess with the bed and breakfast, there's two things. It it can be used as a loophole in our system to create a virtual short term rental. Uh and doesn't have the same requirements because it's a, you know, bedroom with a lock, a lock on it. But uh a bed and B can, a a bed and breakfast can be advertised on the short term rental platforms like Airbnb. Uh just like an STR. And so I think to the world, there really is no difference, other than when you're booking on Airbnb or vacation rental by owner or whatever platform, you're seeing what the, you know, choosing what kind of privacy you might have. Um and so even even the the bear bed and breakfast, the traditional way where you sit down with the family and have breakfast with them. Um the it it certainly can just be, okay, well, here's a box of Cheerios. Um it help yourself kind of thing. And and you could have that with a short term rental. So the blurriness is getting very much the same thing. Um and so the urgency, I think that Matt Cherry is, uh Counselor Cherry's mentioning is uh specifically is with this uh aside from the uh opportunity of the loophole, uh there's also this cost differential. So there could be this massive sh- shift. Just even from this conversation, there might be some people waking up and saying, oh, I can't have a short term rental, but I can have an Airbnb. I'm going to go register. And by the way, it doesn't cost that much. So I think I think that's a very relevant and it seems to me that it based on Counselor Cherry's comments and the planner's comments, it's probably getting very much to being the same thing and perhaps should be the same, exactly the same. Um I wouldn't want to leave it too long because uh you you know, we're playing it's uh on the on the fees, on playing this sort of game there. So I I guess there's just some comments. It's a bit of distraction, like we really should be dealing with the big budget right now. But I think it, I think there is an urgency and I would concur with Counselor Cherry on that. Thank you, Mary Souls.
So Mr. Simon, any comment before I go back to uh council, some other counselors have some questions or comments?
Uh through your worship to all of council, I think that uh Counselor Cherry and Counselor Palmer are are hitting the nail on the head. This is a challenge that we are seeing within the Development Services Group. And one of the things is our zoning bylaw permits bed and breakfast and single detached residences in every zone in the city, every standard zone, I should say, but restrict short term rental. And the difference between short term rental when you are a permanent resident onsite operator in a bed and breakfast with a permanent resident onsite operator is quite minimal. So as we do reexamine this issue in the future, this is something that we are going to have to reconcile. And I can tell you from a processing perspective for internal staff here, the difference between a B and B and a short term rental is is quite minimal in terms of the staff time it takes to review. And you will note in the preceding report, we have received four applications so far this year since introduction and enforcement of the new regulations to convert uh secondary suites to pull them out of houses so that they can be a lawful B and B. So that is one of the unintended consequences of the new short term rental regulations. So it's it's a big challenge to tackle and it's not something that's going to be sorted out today. But these are important components for council to be aware of as we do look to build upon these regulations in the future. And the discrepancy between the fees is one piece of a of a much bigger picture.
All right. So, yeah, we should probably take those fees and make them the same as uh Airbnb. So Counselor Orlando, Counselor Statement Nurse, then back to Counselor Palmer.
Uh yeah, your worship, um just uh two points. One is clarification. Um is is there, there's not, or do we need a resolution on the table to direct staff to um uh explore fee levels and present to us? Or is that going to happen?
You can just ask.
Yeah, it either or, it doesn't matter. It could be cleaner if if council gave us direction.
Um, okay. Um, okay, I'll I'll get, I'll come back to that. Sure. Um I just want to make a comment first in that uh way back in like twenty twelve or twenty thirteen, I remember sitting in the room and asking council, what was Airbnb thing? And everyone said, you know, what's Airbnb like? So, you know, ten years later now, um my point on this um specific discreet discussion, uh maybe the previous item a little bit too, is that whatever resolutions um uh or interventions are suggested by staff, I really would appreciate that it's uh holistic uh uh and effective. Um I sort of feel myself often in a position where I look at, you know, uh all of these details and we get sort of, I feel there's a bit of getting lost in the weeds on the details and then we have something else popping up. And right now, the discussion about uh the cost of uh B and B licensing and everything, you know, that was right up front of my mind last September when this was being discussed. And part of me goes, why wasn't this uh as part of a comprehensive package? I feel like we're kind of sort of hitting every stair on the way down uh through policy discussions and everything. And it 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 gets to be a bit frustrating. And one last comment, uh just generally on bylaw enforcement, um bylaw enforcement cost recovery has never been above ten percent. Well, below that, and not just not just short term rentals or rental stuff, all kinds of stuff. Bylaw enforcement is a service. So what is happening is I am, as a taxpayer who doesn't have a short term rental or a B and B, I am paying uh to have uh bylaw staff run around and do all of these things. And I don't like that. It's a tax fairness thing. And the second thing, of course, as we all know, is uh these um uh short term rentals as well and B and Bs don't pay commercial rates. So we're presenting an unfair situation for those who do hotels, uh other licensed uh uh um establishments. And we've heard again and again and again from a real estate accommodation association. So again, to summarize, I would like holistic uh solutions to be thought of. Um so we can bring this to a resolution, get people in compliance, get there to the end. To that end, I would like to make a resolution and that is that staff present options for uh adjusting B and B fees uh uh according to uh uh um staff present options for adjusting.
Second for that motion?
I'll second.
Okay. Counselor Devon, Devlin had his hand up. Thank you, Counselor Palmer. Do uh Counselor Palmer, you want to speak to this with your hand up?
Uh, yeah, I could um the uh i- interesting conversation. So there's a few comments, um and I won't belabor it. I think the the dialogue now with the motion on the table is uh on the the review of the fees. And it was a question that I actually had as well uh through to the planner. It would seem to me on that very microscopic component of this, uh the whole dial, the holistic dialogue, because this is very specific. But it seems to me that that review could happen very quickly with staff time. Is that accurate? Like, I don't think we need to go into you know, massive analysis and that kind of thing. I think we can be pretty intuitive with this, would seem to me.
Uh through your worship to Counselor Palmer, yes, we could prepare a report and a corresponding bylaw for council consideration uh in pretty quick order.
Great, yeah. And I think one of those options would probably be, you'll you'll take a look at, but it seems to me one of the problems would be just have it on parity with uh short term rentals. Uh that might be too big of a chunk for, obviously, the Airbnb, people aren't going to be too happy with that. Um but uh there there is that other dialogue. Um I I I think I'll just leave it with that. Mary Souls, I have some other comments on some of the stuff that uh Counselor Orlando bike. It can be left for another time. Thank you.
All right. Counselor Statement Nurse and Counselor Cherry.
Thank you, your worship. Just uh I just want to uh make note that uh the Dylan Housing Needs Assessment that came out two thousand and eighteen um referenced the need for more hostels. Um so I think, I think in part the reason why we're seeing more B and Bs is, one, yeah, because of the short term rental by law, but two, um I think it's also in part because, you know, the affordable accommodations such as the hostel and the cube hotel have been bought up and are no longer on the market. So I think that's something to factor in with this. Um and that's a, yeah.
Thank you, Counselor Cherry.
I'm just curious of council's interest in admitting the motion to put more restrictive language such as the term aggressive increases and changes the fees.
Um, yeah, well, I I think at this point, uh the motion on the table is for some options to come back from Mr. Simon's group and that. And I think, you know, if there's some comments about how uh how that's worked or how the bylaws were um that's one thing. You you look at this and go, you can call this, kind of have some people who are in the Airbnb uh legitimately saying that this is uh really aggressive. And you're going to have others who are not in it going to go they'll mask it by saying, yeah, it's an aggressive way just to get more money. Uh the reality is we're looking at cost recovery and trying to uh help our community with uh cutting down on uh unmasking what they're really doing. That's, that was your intention of the 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 problem. And uh and so I think if uh if we're all in agreeance, having council or pardon me, having staff come back to council with some assertive measures, you can call them aggressive, you can call them whatever you want, but uh to actually bring this up so that we don't have people masking this Airbnb uh with really what they're doing. I think that's the key. You have further comment that you feel regarding that, counsel?
No, I I appreciate that your worship. I just want to say that I don't think it's fair that the, as Counselor Orlando mentioned, that the average taxpayers who's picking up the bill
Right.
for all of this. And that's why I brought this up.
Okay. So any other comments further to uh the motion that's on the table for staff? Counselor Devon?
Uh I did have one, yes, through the chair to uh Mr. Simon. I'm looking at the comparison with other municipalities chart we've included here, and I'm noticing that Kelowna and Victoria have different rates for principal residences in terms of short term rentals and uh other types of STRs with the others being significantly higher. Are they under some sort of prescriptive legislation that allows that or can anybody do that essentially?
Mr. Simon?
Through your worship to Counselor Devlin, we would be able to introduce uh a fee structure similar to that. One item I would caution if we do go that way, um I think it's an excellent idea. But I think that it should be part of a more robust, comprehensive review of the short term rental regulations and where we want to go as a community, and then having a fee structure to reflect that. Um but should council wish for, you know, a friendly amendment to the existing motion for us to look at pursuing that? It would only impact the short term rentals in a specifically designated area adjacent to Hay Road. So there's fifty-nine properties kind of sandwiched between RMR McKenzie Village along Hay Road that are eligible for short term rental, but only when operated by a permanent resident onsite operator. So it would only impact those properties, um but something for for council to decide if they want staff to pursue that direction.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Cherry.
Thanks your worship. I'd like to see the B and B uh conversation fast tracked and potentially revisit what Counselor Devon just brought up in October.
I was just curious on the on the thing, because I know there's not a lot of people do it. And I know that sometimes larger municipalities have different rules they've logged for.
So let's have a look at that with the other staff in October. Okay. So the motion on the table is dealing with the Airbnb stuff, so that staff.
Bed and breakfast.
Or bed and breakfast, pardon. Yeah, bed and breakfast stuff. And and so staff will be able to come back with something comprehensive fairly quickly. And uh and that can come to council. So um any further comment on that, Mr. Simon, before I call vote on this?
Uh through your worship, nothing further from my side.
Okay, great. Any other comment from council? Seeing none, all in favor. Motion's carried unanimously. Thank you. All right. So we're going to move on to item F, uh draft long term financial plan. Miss Moore, Mr. Bogart, you have the floor.
Thank you through your worship. Um I have forwarded council all of the remaining public feedback uh that was received in the last week since the agenda was published. And I've also republished the agenda. Uh we have here before you motions to do the increases for the property taxes at the utility rates. Uh we have left the property tax increase for two thousand and twenty-three uh blank as we provided three different scenarios. Uh and in addition to that, if council would like to see any changes to the two thousand and twenty-three uh long term financial plan that was presented to you, uh now would be a good time to direct staff to do so. Uh as we start to do the readings of the bylaw, it becomes increasingly more difficult to make changes to the long term financial plan. Uh I do not have a presentation, but I am available to answer any questions or discuss uh some of the public feedback and engagement that came in.
All right. Any comments from council regarding what they've seen from the community? Uh looking at this, we've got uh as far as percentage rates go, um you know, a higher percentage of people said five percent uh versus four. And then the the larger percentage of those who make comment was three percent. Uh but I'm willing to see what you feel around the table. Wyatt, is church mic?
Um it's a, it's a tricky, tricky conversation. I did have.
Go ahead, Counselor Devon.
Uh through the chair to Miss Moore. Uh this might be putting you a little bit on the spot because I'm not sure that you can come up with the mathematical question and it's more of a hypothetical question, I suppose, at this point. I don't know that we need to go into revisiting entire presentations to try to figure this out. But if you had any sort of But if you had any sort of idea, we've received emails from the Chamber of Commerce asking us to put a freeze on commercial tax rates, which is not really something that I don't think our system really allows specifically. Because if we raise residential, we will automatically raise commercial. But I was kind of curious if you had any idea if we went with a higher than three percent, so either four percent or five percent scenarios, what sort of effect that could potentially have on hypothetically lowering the mill rates, the difference in mill rates between commercial and residential, if you could sort of touch on that, I suppose. Like I said, it's kind of a very specific question with very specific numbers that you probably don't have in front of you.
Ms. Moore?
Thank you through the chair and your worship to Counselor Devlin. Yes, I do try and touch on it on our tax distribution report that is on the agenda as well. Council does have the option. If you were whichever percentage you choose, three, four, or five percent, you can shift the burden to a different class, which will result in perhaps, and I can't, I don't have the calculation, of course. Say if you said three percent and you wanted to shift some of the burden to residential, you may see residential get a four percent increase instead. And the commercial business other class get a two percent increase, averaging out at an overall three percent increase. That is an option that is presented in the tax distribution report and something to consider as you're choosing a percentage increase for the two thousand twenty three draft budget and long term financial plan. If you were to go with the five percent increase on the higher end, and when you do go to shift that burden, you may see other classes seeing six or seven percent taxation increases, depending on how much you want to shift. And it is, it is a tough year. Interest rates are really high and people who have to refinance right now or or on variable that that may be significant to them. So something to keep in mind as you're you're thinking about percentages and shifting the burden. And we can certainly discuss it in more detail if, once you've picked a percentage and we're talking about the tax distribution. Hopefully that helps.
Does, thank you. I just wanted to make it clear that I'm not necessarily suggesting we do such a thing. I just think that we've received now at least three emails from the chamber, and so I think it's worth a conversation to be had around that. Very least, although I'm not particularly ever in favor of making residents pay more than they have to pay.
I think over the years, comment I've heard from other business people is that if you were to compare our taxes with maybe some of the bigger centers percentage wise, that we pay a higher percentage for our businesses. And as we see interest rates rise, I can, I can say from a business perspective, I see my costs and my business rising, but also looking at those who are in that situation where they have to be mortgage to you know, because it's just that time, five years or whatever, they've had their mortgage and the residential's gone up and and now we're seeing their increases maybe double or triple as far as cost goes. So it's always a hard decision how we can balance what's going to be best for everybody moving forward. So I'm looking for other comments or questions from councils. Counsel Chair?
Thanks, your worship. I've received a lot of in person comments about the budget and how it's been presented. Everybody's highly in favorable favor of how this was sent to us, how the community got it. They enjoyed actually being able to follow along and understand it, not have to read through a few hundred pages. So I appreciate that. One of the comments I keep getting comes down to hiring more people on a staff level in a way to mitigate overtime that's being charged.
Okay, that's that's something that definitely operations have been trying and we saw a success in our IT department where they were able to hire more staff to give give less OT and it's well, but Ms. Moore, do you have a comment on that? And so we're deviating a little bit from where we need to be as far as the motion or suggested motions here as far as budget goes. But Ms. Moore, any comment regarding staff, increase in staff versus OT? Because not not only do we bring staff on, we're paying their wages, we're paying their benefits and and other things. And you look at that and go, okay, is is that, is there an equalization point in that?
Through your worship, of course, when we do go to submit spending packages and the spending initiatives that are presented before you for the operating plan that are related to staff positions, that's something that we take into account, what we recommend to you in terms of how much overtime staff are having to work because we need to grow as an organization to accommodate the increased workload due to growth in the community. And and that's something that I've had long conversations with the fire department about trying to estimate what that would look like. And so it's something that we consider. Is is this position going to be able to reduce overtime? Will we be able to get more more bang for your buck with this position being a new one instead of having someone work overtime? And it's certainly a discussion point as we determine which operating spending packages and positions we recommend forward to council. And and we, of course, from a financial perspective, it is better to to not pay people overtime. And and from an HR employee perspective, it's also good to not have the employee burnout.
All right. Awesome. I appreciate that. Probably something I should have brought up earlier. My next point I want to make is just looking at the poll here and then double checking it on Talk Revelstoke right now. I think there should be some awareness that over fifty percent of the respondents are actually interested in more than a three percent increase to taxes.
Okay, that's what you're saying now?
Yeah, there's fifty seven votes, whereas in our report, there is only forty one responses. And I think that council should be aware that that more than fifty percent of the people are actually in support of that, that have responded, of course. Something unusual.
Through your worship, a lot of votes today. I pulled that this morning.
So when we, because I don't have that, I'm not refreshing this and I have everybody on my computer, so I'm not going to get those up to date stats. So when we look at that, Council Chair, Ms. Moore, you know, how many people are opting for the four percent or the five percent versus obviously, they're more than looking at the three percent, so higher percentage with that. Counsel Palmer, you have your hand up?
Um, thank you, Mayor Souls. Just getting back to the Talk Revelstoke. So on the public engagement, I got a kind of some layered thinking here. So just bear with me if you may, Ken. So just some more. If staff could just, while I'm talking right now, if they're able to grab this stuff from the Talk Revelstoke on just the easy, the difference between the one, the two, or sorry, the three, four, and five scenario, just so I have a better sense. And the question that I'm going to have on that specifically, are we still in the public feedback period today? So we should be taking that in consideration. On the the comments, on the generally on the comments, the public, like we've gone through this public consultation process and it's been pretty, it's been pretty good overall. And we've had more response than I think typically that we would get. One of the frustrations for the taxpayer, of course, is we go ask further input and then we don't really consider it and and, you know, carry on doing whatever we're going to do. That's, you know, a common criticism, and it's not without merit. A lot of the 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 questions is sort of detailed stuff. And so, you know, we had this sort of detail thing about overtime and the implications. Ideally, that's we've drilled down into that kind of detail much, much earlier in the process. And because now we're at this place of a potential resolution of just setting rates. The, and so it just, you know, some general comment on all that, you know, because there's some really good information that the public's provided, some really good comments. It it's it's very specific thing. And if we were, you know, very specifics, and if we were to spend a lot of time on one particular item, budget item, that we're maybe losing the big picture view. At the same time, if we don't pay attention to that, there's, you know, there's almost a little bit of a mockery as to whether we're listening or not. And so I think I would like to see some of these questions brought back that are relevant as we go into the next next budget cycle after this one's passed. But just getting back to the percentage, to me, that's an interesting piece of information, a feedback. There was, I know there was one specific on the the four percent, but does staff have the information on what's happened on Talk Revelstoke at this point? And what the percent, the numbers of respondents and how they're voting?
Ms. Moore, comment?
Through your worship, can you see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, I am currently on the Talk Revelstoke website here. I've just signed in. We have on this quick poll, and I think this is similar to what I sent out as an update today to council. Maybe one or two votes for, but I think this might be the same. There are forty eight contributors. This green box, the Zoom sidebar, it's kind of covering my legend here, but this green box represents the three percent vote. This orange pie represents the four percent vote, and this purple pie represents the five percent vote. So you have about fifty six percent looking for the three percent taxation increase and the remaining has opted for a higher. So about forty, forty four percent have have indicated that they'd be willing to pay a bit more to save for some of our future capital projects that will require quite a bit of funding.
Council Chair?
Thanks, your worship. I'm just on Talk Revelstoke right now. The updated numbers are forty seven percent at three percent and then fifty three percent at higher rates. With fifty seven votes.
Interesting.
And we're only getting fifty eight coming, forty eight coming up on the screen.
Yeah, I've got the same thing, Matt. Although I don't get it in pie chart form, I just have it on the slide over there.
Okay. Did you hear that, Ms. Moore? It's not coming in pie chart format. It's coming just kind of on the slide.
Probably just on a slightly different page, but it was on the slide.
And so what was our deadline for feedback? Was it four o'clock today or yesterday or?
It was four thirty PM yesterday, and what I polled for council was first thing this morning. In case someone voted in the evening.
All right, Counsel Orlando, you have your.
Uh, yeah, your worship, just a comment. I mean, it's great to have these tools and gather input. I'm fully supportive of the engagement tools, but it's not statistically representative of any feedback. And if I wanted to get a dozen people together to go vote at the last minute in one direction, it's pretty easy to do. So fifty eight votes, I'll take that with a grain of salt, but I'm not going to be splitting, you know, the numbers based on a percentage of public sentiment.
Right. Thank you for that comment. All right, any, so any appetite to embrace these recommendations here to go to council? Going back to the draft long term plan and the committee of the hall recommending percentage increase and then the set increases that we talked about for for future and for our utility rates. Counsel Devon?
I'm sure I'll start the conversation. I'm very much in in support of the utility rates. I think that has been discussed as something that is needed and is trying to bring things up to par where they need to be. They've been, from what I understand, critically under for a little while here. I'm going to personally suggest the three percent increase. I think Revelstoke is generally considered a very expensive town. And I don't wouldn't, it wouldn't sit right with the with the conversation I had coming into this term to suggest a more expensive scenario. I think three percent is about the minimum we can do, but it is necessary.
Hey, thank you for that comment. Any other comments from council around the table? Counsel State and Hearst?
I'll just echo what Counsel Devon just said.
Thank you for that. You know, I'm I'm hearing the same thing through the people in our community or the people that engage with me is, you know, their expenses are are increasing in every capacity that they have and whatever we can do to get us by and still have the ability to plan for the future. And as proposed, the three percent would do that. So that's kind of my my personal feeling and those who've engaged with me. Counsel Lucio, you have your hand up?
Yeah, I was just going to agree with that. We all know things are getting harder and harder to afford here in town. I think the three percent increase is good to cover our operating costs and be putting money into reserves. We obviously have bigger projects coming down the pipeline in the next couple of years, but for this year, I think three percent is appropriate.
All right, Counsel Palmer, you had your hand up and was that from previous?
Uh, no, it's okay. Thank you, Mayor Souls. Just, I think, just where it's going, perhaps one of the counselors would like to put a motion on the table accordingly.
And so does someone, Counsel Devon, you want to put your motion on?
I will propose that the committee of the whole recommend to council that we move forward with a three percent increase as out of the three percent scenario of the draft long term financial.
And then all the other increases for that are set there would be suitable? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, that's per that's just the three percent scenario.
Okay, so is there a second for that motion? Counsel Lucio, any further discussion on that? Counsel Orlando?
Just for clarification, your worship, this is under recommendations point one, three percent, and then the
That's correct.
remaining seven or eight.
S. Yeah, okay, yes, correct. All right. Any other comments from council around the table? Okay, I'll call Counsel Palmer, you have your hand up now?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Souls. Yeah, so it's it's interesting doing it as a bulk recommendation to council. I think when it gets to the council level, I would like to, I think I would like to see the, actually, I would like to see them as separate resolutions rather than as a block. It's just something to consider when it comes back for at the council level. And because this is, you know, I'm, I'll I'll vote in favor of this because it's a recommendation coming from the committee of the whole as a sort of general. It doesn't necessarily reflect my opinion as to the appropriateness of the rate, so.
All right, appreciate that comment. Any other comments around the table? Again, this is a recommendation to council. Counsel Orlando?
Yeah, your worship, just in the interest of communication and crystal clarity, just reiterating what we just talked about a second ago. For anybody watching on YouTube, we're talking about page one of the initial report here. So we've put three percent in the blank spot and are recommending everything that is following there under point one. So just in case, often people are confused as to actually what's happening.
Yeah, so actually, Counsel Devon, if you don't mind, I know we've got a second here for this, but would you mind just reading this out just for the record?
Yes, I can. We're just going to the first page here.
Yes.
Two seconds. I will move that the City of Revelstoke's two thousand twenty three, two thousand twenty seven financial fund bylaw and utility user rate bylaws be prepared on the basis of the following: three percent increase in property taxes in two thousand twenty three, a three percent increase in property taxes each year from two thousand twenty four to two thousand twenty seven, a four percent increase in garbage user rates in two thousand twenty three, a four percent increase in garbage user rates each year from two thousand twenty four to two thousand twenty seven, a five percent increase in water user rates in two thousand twenty three, a five percent increase in water user rates each year from two thousand twenty four to two thousand twenty seven, fifteen percent increase of Big Eddie water user rates in two thousand twenty three, a five percent increase of Big Eddie water user rates each year from two thousand twenty four to two thousand twenty seven, a twenty percent increase in sewer user rates and frontage tax. A twenty percent increase in sewer user rates and frontage taxes in two thousand twenty three, and a five percent increase in sewer user rates and frontage taxes each year from two thousand twenty four to two thousand twenty seven.
Great, thank you. Appreciate that. I need to get us, we got a second for that. So any further comments on on that? Counselor Cherry.
Yeah, I just want to commend staff. There's been multiple municipalities, districts, cities all across the province that are seeing a double digit increase in property taxes this year. So I just want to thank everybody for all the work and making sure that we weren't one of those.
Yeah, and and just to go further on that, and the way it was proposed and brought forward, so it was understandable for community. Kudos to that. Counsel Palmer, you have your hand up. You want to make comment?
Thank you, and also thank you, Dimas Moore, on the good work in helping us through the budget cycle this first term of council. I I do hope that we dive into it much earlier next year. And in the sort of same vein as Counselor Orlando on sort of information to the listening public and for ourselves. This one, one of the increases is three percent in the subsequent years, two thousand twenty four through two thousand twenty seven. That will be reflected in the, assuming this gets passed, will be reflected in the long term financial plan. That quickly gets forgotten the next budget cycle. And you know, ideally, it should be fairly, especially two thousand twenty four, should be pretty close. But there's a lot of uncertainty that's happening in the world, and I don't feel that. We as council have really wrestled with the long term implications. Of course, we're in this unique of the first year of a council term. I I will support the motion. Again, I'll just reiterate that I would like to see these. I think I would like to see them all broken out individually. At the council. Level, but I'll leave that with mayor and staff to figure that out when it gets on the agenda. Thank you, Mayor Souls.
All right, in due time. All right. Let's call a question. All those in favor? Opposed? No motions carried unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Moore, for regard. Appreciate. The way you've presented this and your work on this, so we'll leave it with you and we'll have a conversation as to how it's coming to council. Let's move on now. Time's going on. Internal debt wastewater treatment plant upgrade. So Ms. Moore, you have a presentation or can answer some questions regarding where we go with wastewater?
Through your worship, I do not have a presentation today. At the original committee of the whole budget meeting, we talked. A little bit about internal debt versus external debt. And so we brought this report forward for the committee to review. And both Mr. Beauregard and I'm here to answer any questions if you have any.
Any comments on the report regarding things that flush? Mr. Beauregard, you have your hand up.
I, yes, Your Worship, I just want to remind council on the report that we just previously. Were reviewing that there were some other motions there for consideration of council.
I missed that, so my apologies. So let's just take a moment and and go back to to that. Got caught up in in that sort of thing. So the operating spending initiatives. So do we want to talk a little bit about that? This is going to go to, again, go to council? Or ratification? Do you want to speak to that, Kenner Shan, or just regarding golf course museum, that sort of thing?
Through your worship, I've no further comments, but happy to answer any questions about those specific operating spending initiatives.
Okay, so the first crack, Counsel Orlando.
Oh, Your Worship, thank you through the chair. A lot of people have wondered what the audio recording studio. Line item is, I'm seeking a bit more information.
Through your worship and to respond to Counselor Orlando, that is a recording studio that we would renovate a room in the courthouse. So that the mayor can do his interviews and recordings in a better space instead of in the open area upstairs at City Hall.
Your worship, a follow up question. Is that room rented now or what's it used for?
Do we know, Ms. Moore, do you? Do you know what's happening? Is that an empty room or?
Through your worship, my understanding is that it recently became a vacant room at the courthouse.
Okay, and we're limited with what we can rent out over there just with our relationship with court services, my understanding. Is that correct?
Through your worship, I believe that is correct, but Miss Floyd would be better better suited to respond to that one.
Thank you, Your Worship. So the property is zoned public use. I think it's P one perhaps. And in previous years prior to the most recent zoning update, offices only. Offices that were provincially, they were involved with government were only allowed in there. The update to the zoning bylaw now allows offices across the board.
Okay. Good. Counselor Stapenhurst, and then I'll go back to Counsel Orlando for follow up.
I had just a quick question for the line item of the fire and emergency services, the solo decontamination washer. So my understanding is if this was to be used for P P E or your personal protective equipment, i.e. your turnout gear. There's a really good chance of, there's been a recent study that says the the turnout gear is off gassing these. And it's causing cancer. We we used to always think that our turnout gear was causing our cancer because of. The explosion that we had inside burning buildings and what that was, the contaminant being inside. My understanding now is that it's actually the material that's being made out of the the turnout gear.
Right.
So my concern was this forty five thousand dollars, that if the intent of that machine was to wash our turnout gear. But we have the strong possibility that we're going to have to swap out our turnout gear for for a new type of material. Then that machine would become obsolete. So that would be my concern with that line item. But otherwise, I totally support anything that would make their job safer. That's McCollum.
Okay, so I'm going to go back to item number two and let's deal with that one first. So someone want to put that motion on the table? So we haven't asked any of the questions about that regarding support for the golf course and the museum. Communications, planning tech, those compliance software, flex firefighter to permanent. And then they've they've come up with some ways of dealing with this internally on a lot of this stuff, but it's here for us. Operations operator. Anyway, so we could deal with item number two and and then vote on that. So is someone inclined to put that motion on the table for me, Counselor Devon?
I move that the following new operation spending initiatives be included in the city's budget and related financial plan by law. Do you want me to read them all out?
No, just as in the.
As in the package.
Right. Second for that motion, Counsel Lucio. Any discussion on that motion? Counsel Orlando?
Ah, yeah, Your Worship, I guess I'm going to say I'm not supportive of the audio recording studio. I feel that, I mean, ten thousand dollars seems like a lot for that, given the technology is available. And then that's not so much my concern. My concern is lost revenue ongoing from a rental from a city building. And I know there's, I believe the library has audio recording studios. I think there's a lot of options. And we also, you know, need office space for various. Organizations.
Okay, thanks for your comments. And that's on item number three. So on item number two, that's not in that part that we're going to vote on now. So thank you for that comment. So on the motion on the table regarding the stuff that's in front of you. Counselor Palmer, you have your hand up. My apologies, I wasn't looking at the computer.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Souls. Just further from my to my previous comment, this, these are the kind of things that I would have liked to have seen us wrestle. Last fall. Now that wasn't practical within a new council, and that's because we're getting into really nitty gritty details here. So that I'm just sort of making that statement and for hopefully staff are getting prepared with their their ass. Ideally, it's in the. The long term financial, you know, their request for two thousand twenty four are, should ideally be already be reflected in the long term financial plan. And already well underway, and hopefully we can drill down to that kind of detail this fall. So that's, I guess, my my one comment on this, and it'll be the same for item number three. Thank you, Mayor Souls.
Thank you for that comment, and I don't disagree with that. So I think our budget needs to be passed by May fifteenth. So soon thereafter, we should start on this stuff. And as as we've heard from staff, again, definitely with our capital stuff. We need to get that in so that our engineering department or planning department can go up for R F Ps and get better prices for us. So I don't disagree. So going back to item number two, seeing no other comments on there, I will ask the question. All those in favor? Opposed? No motions carried unanimously. We're going to move to item number three. And then, Mr. Wilson, I see that you're on here. I don't know whether you heard Counsel Orlando's concern about. The recording studio costs and utilization of space in in the courthouse. Do you have any comment or want to weigh in on any of that stuff?
Certainly, Your Worship. Through the chair to Counsel Orlando, you are spot on in terms of revenue lost. It is potential revenue lost. Presently, that space is sitting empty. Our big concern with the audio studio is we are starting to do a lot more multimedia production in the city. And presently, we're using the main space of City Hall to do interviews. It's not an acoustically treated space, and there's presently a decent amount of operational production disruption. Involved in producing that audio in terms of telling the whole building to please be quiet while we do our recordings. So ten thousand dollars was to retrofit that office that is full of dated furniture and everything like that. Into something that actually we could properly do a quality audio recording. It was intended in the spirit of better communications, starting to move the city's digital audio abilities into more of the modern era. And particularly in light of the struggles we've had with many of our facilities, where we just throw a microphone in the room. And then end up with all kinds of echo and and problems coming out of it. So the idea was to create a space where it would always be set up to do a recording with minimal operational disruption. And the ten thousand dollars was intended for recording equipment and for acoustically treating the room and making it more fitting to conduct interviews in. That's the whole idea behind that particular budget line item.
So Stapenhurst.
Thank you, Your Worship. Through the chair to Mr. Wilson. How much more efficient and like, like? Time saving and and financial savings is there going to be for for your team to have this room permanently set up? So you're not always going to City Hall to set up the, you know, the mics and the recordings and all that.
Mr. Wilson.
Through your worship to Counselor Stapenhurst. Great question. So. My communication guy, Jay, is currently burning, I would say, three quarters to an entire Friday. On setting up video editing and conducting the entire interview. Phase for interviews every time they happen. This would cut a substantial amount of time and overhead involved in creating those videos. If we were to have an audio studio at the ready, it would reduce the the setup and takedown time. And it would certainly make it a lot easier to to key up and have people ready to go and and to record on Fridays when we need to do that. It would also expand our capacity so we can do more than just the Friday interviews.
Thank you, Your Worship. Just a follow up question. Will those costs and time savings be more than the ten thousand dollar? Ask here.
So ten thousand dollars is a one time. E, sorry, a one time capital cost. So it would buy the stuff. And and then we would get some kind of a useful life out of that. I'm assuming what we bought in there would last. Ten years or so, and then it would be too dirty, too beat up. We'd want to probably replace it. So given the ten year lifespan expected cost of that, that would be, it would have to save us a thousand dollars a year. And saving a thousand dollars a year in operational cost is easy to do. So the answer is yes, it's it's worth the money.
Thank you. So Counsel Palmer and Counsel Lucio.
Thank you, Mayor Souls. I'll just point out that we're we're, so now we're going to spend about the same amount of time on a ten thousand dollar line item that we did on a multimillion dollar budget overall. Just pointing out the contradiction. The I I don't really have a problem with the ten thousand because of the the materialism, you know, the amount that it is relative to the budget. I think there the discussion is is useful, and it ties back to the whole communications thing where we're going with communication strategy. I would hope that we don't invest in this until we have our communications person in place. The other point that I want to make is, I think it was already alluded to, but the library is also has received grant money that's going to be publicly available. I know there's a lot of hiccups that were happening along with that, but this a place for potential a sound, a sound room. And, you know, where where do we look for those synergies? Again, I think the more important thing is, you know, as we move ahead and then with communications and how we're we're dealing with that. And just to poke a little bit of fun, I guess. You know, one of the importance of a good recording studio is for the mayors to look really good for the next campaign season.
Counsel Orlando.
Yeah, Your Worship, and I take Counsel Palmer's comment to heart that it is a relatively small item. However, with ongoing lost revenue every year for the office space. I think it's more significant than ten thousand, more like ten thousand dollars per year. However, I would point out that we are in the process on the business in front of us, hiring a communications professional. I don't know where in the planning process the idea of the need to do these recordings came from. It did not arise through the communications task force. I don't know if there's been direction on this one. And I guess my concern is that we, from a communications perspective, this was not raised. It's not part of, you know, part of direction, and we're moving ahead with something that might be counterproductive. And again, the library has one, radio station has one, handheld recordings, that kind of stuff has one. I just, I'm not happy with it, but I'm happy to move on from this item. And also just make a comment that, yes, we need to move our budget cycle up. I know we've had staff changes this year, so. No blame on anyone who's done a great job this year, but we, I would say, we do need an opportunity to discuss these things. And also discussing them shouldn't be a high stress thing. We're talking about the budget. We're trying to get through it. And somebody raising questions is what we're here for.
All right, someone want to put this motion on the table here for us? For Counselor Cherry, you have a comment?
I do. A question and a comment, just because we're looking at it line by line. I understand people don't seem to be too appreciative of that. The curling club lighting upgrades, we have a thousand seventeen thousand dollar line item with eighty five hundred dollars coming from the club. I'm just curious how. More why if. That building probably won't be lasting much longer, or why that money is being spent, or how urgent.
Ms. Moore, do you have comments on that? Or should we go to Mr. Black?
Through your worship, to Counselor Cherry, this line item. I've just received very recent information that they could pay for the entire lighting upgrade. And the eighty five hundred dollars savings we would put towards the arena project for the communications plan and architectural drawings. One of the reasons for the lighting upgrades coming forward is because they are no longer making the certain light bulbs or lighting structures. I'm not quite clear on that one any further. And if they don't upgrade them now, it may be a lot more expensive to retrofit them in the future. I'm not sure if Ms. Donato is still in the room and could clarify better than me.
She's not.
Okay.
But thanks for that. So Council Chair, I'll go back to you and then Council Palmer.
Thanks for worship. Just a follow up. Do you know if it's an entire lighting upgrade or just the minimal replacement to keep it running?
I believe it's a significant portion of the lights and it's related to the supplier no longer making the lights or something around the installation of the lights. And as I noted, my understanding is the curling club is now paying for the entire cost of the lighting upgrades. And so if if the lights fail in the future before we are no longer using that building, I think it will be a lot more costly to upgrade them at that time.
Thank you. I just caution putting money into that building as well.
Absolutely.
Other than the minimal maintenance required for safety.
Council Palmer, you have your hand up.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Souls. The just on the overall conversation and further to Council Orlando, so I'm just talking holistically and why we have the need of doing this kind of conversation earlier on, they are important items right down to the $10,000 line item. And in in yet, this is being kind of wedged this 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 conversation on this $1.6 million is essentially being wedged in a resolution that we've already made. And now we're really wrestling with some of the details, whether it's the recording studio. We've talked about the decamination washer, whether that's a prudent decision or not. We've had input from the public on various individual items, things like the front counter. There's a service level thing that we've sort of alluded to it, but we haven't really wrestled with that, which is a bigger price item. The 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 dog park, you know, I know note that one. And so there's a bit of confusion even for myself on that hundred thousand dollar budget line item in here in this capital as to how it applies to the discussion that we had on the 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 new park space. And so there's all the all these kind of things. And I I think really that holistically as council, ideally, we would have wrestled with these before the budget process. And I I would just caution that, you know, as we, you know, when we pass the budget, eventually we have to pass the budget. And whatever items are reflected on there, you know, do we need to have sober second thought at that point? Or do we take and say, okay, let's have this robust capital project discussion, you know, before we pass the budget? And we're having that components of it here right now. But it seems like we're raising more questions than we are actually answering. So again, there's, you know, like at least a half a dozen here that there's a a question mark whether it's a prudent decision that council's making.
Can you hear that comment? So staff help will note that and will have a conversation about that. All right, Council Devlin.
I was just going to move that the following new capital project spending initiatives include the city's budget and related financial plan by law.
Second for that motion. Council Lucille, further discussion on the spending initiatives in this package. This will be a recommendation that goes to Council, Council Orlando and then Council Palmer.
Yeah, I don't know if this is procedurally the right time, but I would like to entertain an amendment that the audio recording studio item be deferred until after communications staff person is in place so that they can incorporate that decision within their long term plan.
I'll second the amendment amending motion.
Okay, so we're going to vote on the amending motion to take out the $10,000. So I'm in favor of the $10,000, but I will ask councils, so those who would like to remove this line item in favor, please raise your hand.
Sir, sorry, Mayor Souls. Are we voting on the amending motion?
We were going to. But Ms. Moore, you have your hand up, so I better ask for procedure here.
Through your worship, I wanted to clarify, are we looking for a deferral of the project? Are you looking to remove it from the plan?
Uh, remove for now and reconsider it next year.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So Council Palmer comments before.
Yeah. So it's interesting because I think it's really tied to this other conversation that we're having and you know, the if it really makes sense, then we probably should be leaving this item in the budget. And so there's a bit of that. To me, there is a sort of a little bit of a sense of ambiguity and whether it's, you know, with the motion, whether it's with a deferral, whether that's move totally removed out. And I think we've got a little bit of clarification. And we can certainly amend the financial plan after it's passed if if prudent. And I I'm I'm wondering, just, you know, like I could vote either in favor or against that, this particular motion either way. But I'm wondering about, you know, subsequent, you know, do we do we have a little bit more of a dialogue on on this? On these capital projects, because again, there was a number of comments from the public and we haven't really wrestled wrestled through that. So that's kind of aside, I'll and so and then just for clarity on the motion is the of the amending motion is to amend the approval of the spending package less the $10,000 for the recording studio. Is that correct?
So this point is nodding in the affirmative. So it's for the so to confirm it's for the entire package minus the recording studios. Is that correct, Miss Floyd?
So if I vote in favor of the amending motion, I am voting to have the recording studio removed from the package. Is that correct? Thank you.
But you're putting everything else forward.
Thank you.
And so I want clarification. So if we vote and remove the recording studio, everything else goes forward. If we vote against it, nothing goes forward. Is that correct? So that's clarification for for.
So Mayor.
Go ahead.
Actually, I think it's corporate officer gonna.
Yeah.
That's her.
So the amending motion is to remove the $10,000 audio recording studio from the plan and be reconsidered in 2024 when the communications position is in place. Then you will call the question on the original motion as amended.
Okay, so basically the first one, I'm calling two questions. Or one.
One.
Calling the question on the amending motion to remove the 10,000.
Right.
And then you will call the question on the motion, original motion as amended.
Okay, so if I, so for example, I'm supportive of leaving that $10,000 in, so I vote against it. I'm not putting everything else in jeopardy.
That's correct.
Okay, that's what I want to make.
Opportunity to vote on the motion as well.
Council Chair.
I just have a question in regards to that light item and the motion on the table. The room that's being considered is currently empty. If it was rented out, how much income would that generate? And have there been any any increase for that space?
Miss Floyd, comment.
Um, so the Corporate Services Coordinator, Jaleen Russo, looks after all of the leases in the courthouse right now. We need to do a complete comparison because most of the leases are below market rate.
Especially?
Um, yes. Yeah. So that's something that's going to be considered going forward. But right now I think there are a few lease spaces that are coming up, so that will be considered going forward.
But no increase?
No, no increase to date. We have not advertised for those either because we want to move forward and get the rates up to par.
Good.
Council Palmer, you have your hand up.
Uh, yeah, Mayor Souls, I just just on the just to clarify, I know I know we've already stated stated it, but we're just on the amending motion, just specifically on this item. Correct. Yeah.
So it's basically remove this line item, voting for that, and then we will do a separate vote to put everything else through if if this line item is removed.
Right.
All right. Any other comments on the light item to remove the $10,000 for the recording studio? So I'll call the question. All those in favor of removing this line item? So note, I have Council Orlando and Council Palmer in favor. All those opposed. So note, we have balance of council opposed to that. So this motion is defeated. All right, going back to the original motion to put through the capital project spending initiatives as Council Devlin and Council Lucy have put forward. Any further discussion on that? Seeing none, I'll call a question on the original motion. All those in favor? Opposed. Note that this motion is passed. Thank you. All right. Now, and we've got everything, Mr. Bureau Guard, and you haven't missed anything further regarding that stuff. Council Palmer, you have a comment?
I, yes, Mayor Souls. So just on the, you know, I'm contemplating a second motion, of course, is just recommendation going to council at this point. However, all of council is here. And I I'm still feeling that we need a little bit more conversation on this this list. And so just just give that some consideration because I I think with the amount of uncertainty on the the questions that have been posed, and again, from the public feedback, that we really do need to go through each one of these a little bit more in a more robust fashion. And I could put that as a motion or I can just leave it for for right now, but I probably will not vote in favor of this in its current form as a formality in front of the council because of the confusion and because of the the public feedback. So that's just a comment. If if you would like a motion, I could certainly figure something out or we can leave it for now.
I think I'll leave it for now, but I'm going to go to Ms. Moore for comment.
Thank you. And through your worship, the budget timeline is that we do need to start reading the bylaws on April 11th. We do the first three readings and then on April 18th we do adoption. We do have until May 15th to adopt the long term financial plan and tax rate by law and fees and charges by law. However, I I do want to note that if there is more discussion on March 28th and changes made at the council table, it will be difficult to to turn it around into a bylaw within a week and a half if there are significant changes. However, I am happy to discuss some of these line items in more detail. Absolutely. And I know that some of the directors and department heads may have left the meeting already and weren't able to respond.
Okay, so you know, I have a I have a concern about that because of course we're going to have a lot of staff away for spring break and, you know, I thought about, you know, calling a special meeting or a finance committee meeting prior to, but you mentioned March 28th, and I don't know whether we have that capacity. If all of staff are going to be back to be able to put together something prior to that. But let me have a little conversation with, well, let's have that conversation now because tomorrow's going to be too late. Council Palmer, you still have your hand up. Do you have something more you'd like to add before I go to staff?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Souls. Actually, I was just thinking about the the same thing about the meeting, like we could have a special meeting next week. There's room in our calendar and notwithstanding you know, that some staff may be away, but these are capital projects and hopefully they've been well vetted and the information should be there for us. I think the big thing is we just haven't wrestled with the numbers. If there's outstanding information that hasn't been provided, then they should be excluded from the financial plan for this year. So I would suggest that we do spend an hour going through each one of these line by line item and again, for 2024, I would like to see that done in the fall. I I I could, yeah, so I would suggest that we meet on Tuesday or Thursday next week.
Just going to go to staff, some of Miss Floyd's away. Ms. Moore, are you around?
I am around next week. I've just pulled up the budget schedule on the screen here, if you can see it. We do, so today's the 16th, next Tuesday would be the 21st for regular council meeting unless we wanted to postpone till the 23rd to on a Thursday for a special council meeting. We do have this special committee of the whole scheduled for March 30th. However, that was around property tax distribution. And since it was brought up earlier in the budgeting process, we brought it forward today here on March 16th. So I am available next week if council chooses to set another meeting and we can review some of these projects of more detail. My understanding is Director Black might be away next week. Is he still in the room?
Yeah, you're away.
I'm away Wednesday.
Okay, you're away Wednesday, the 22nd. Mr. Wilson's away on the 21st. I have meetings Thursday, the 23rd, but if we set this meeting at 3:00 PM in the afternoon on Thursday, the 23rd, but you're
There's a bit of a conflicting schedule. The APC is meeting on the 21st between four and six. And this is going to be the first meeting with a dedicated workshop to the zoning by law comprehensive rewrite. Wildly important.
Yeah, and so 21st is
21st at four, four might or?
Well, so I'm just looking at, so Mr. Wilson's not here on the 21st. Is that correct? Yeah, that's correct. So in in so and then Mr. Black's not here on the 22nd. So we go to the 23rd and set something up, which is a Thursday and go at 3 o'clock. That would accommodate my 1:15 meeting with with provincial.
Sorry, worship. I believe Director Black is away from the 22nd, 23rd and 24th.
Okay, my apologies. I thought it was just the one day. I thought you were just skiing or something. So. Monday, all right, the 20th.
Through your worship, I I do have one other suggestion. I guess I guess Director Black will be away, but we do have a finance committee meeting on March 22nd in the afternoon next Wednesday.
Yeah, that's correct. Thank you for that.
Um, if council and my understanding is finance committee is made up of all of council. If if we wanted to discuss in further detail at that time, while we've already gathered, that is an option.
Okay, why don't we do that? Is that going to work for him? I mean, it's not everybody, Mr. Black's not going to be able to be here.
I've got contractors retaining the final contracts for the wastewater treatment Monday and Tuesday next week in the afternoon.
Okay. And so is any of this stuff that we're discussing imperative that you're present for? Ms. Moore.
Oh, sorry. I thought you were referencing Director Black.
I'm I'm going to ask you because if he's got, he's got other things that are more important, with all due respect, not maybe more important, but are already planned to progress wastewater treatment and it's essential that he's dealing with that.
Uh, through your worship, absolutely. Director Black does not have any new capital project spending initiatives on this year's plan. As I'm looking at it, it's mostly IT, fire and emergency services and uh, I T, fire, and emergency services, and parks, recreation, and culture. The finance committee is um, originally set to review the grant and aid, so I know that Ms. Donato will be present there and can answer any of the parks, recreation, and culture uh, questions, and um, I can certainly see if Mr. Wilson and uh, Mr. Gerosi can um, attend that finance committee meeting uh, in addition.
All right, and then, so Counselor Orlando, you had your hand up.
Uh, yeah, I just, uh, your worship wanted to double check that any meetings next week will have a video link to them, so that we can join remotely, just cause I have
Uh, can we make that happen?
Um, sorry, worship to Shiana, um, do you have your finance committee meetings in here? In council chambers?
Uh, I hope so. We, we will need to double check.
Because we need some people to sign in, that's a question.
Yeah, I was hoping to do it in
Post it just like this.
Yeah, this is, this is where we've been having.
Yes.
Well, not, not this council, prior, prior council, we've been having. And if everyone's good with that, then some of you can sign on. So why don't we plan for that, that finance committee meeting, and we'll discuss this stuff, and we're still gonna keep on track with where we're at this part, is what Ms. Moore needs to put forward, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, is that okay with council?
Yes.
All right, good. Now, we're gonna go back to where we were, is that correct? Um, internal debt wastewater treatment plant upgrade. We progress, as we redress. And we're distressed. Okay, let's go on. Ms. Moore, can we talk about what you'd already started wastewater treatment?
Through your worship, uh, yeah, so this report is brought forward to council as uh, at the original committee of the whole budget meeting. Uh, we were discussing uh, the difference between internal and external debt, and advantages of disadvantages uh, of both. And so, Mr. Beauregard and I have drafted this report uh, for information purposes for council, and the importance of uh, borrowing from the Water D C C to help pay for uh, the wastewater treatment plant project.
So council, do you have any questions for Ms. Moore and Mr. Beauregard regarding this? And borrow from our own reserves to pay for the stuff we're moving forward, is that correct?
That's correct, and instead of taking on external, external debt, or reducing our external debt, is what I should say.
Okay, Counselor Palmer? I'm muted.
Um, thank you, um, Mayor Souls. Uh, the question I have is regarding um, so the, the concern that I have is, is encumbrery money that we maybe need to use elsewhere. It's always this thing, whether you inter- borrow internally and externally. If, in the future, as we sort of better quantify the projects in the capital plan, or, you know, our long-term financial plan in future years, not this year, uh, because I just see it's, it's pretty weak right now. Our, our real planning is um, i- is pretty weak. It, it, will we be able to, to, if we decide to shift from internal borrowing to external borrowing, could we do that in the future?
Through your, through your worship and to Counselor Palmer, um, we can shift external borrowing in the future. Um, it's a lot more restrictive to go the opposite way, uh, to go from external to internal, um, as you may know. Um, and, and we can certainly, um, if we choose to take on external debt in the future, to replenish uh, reserves for other projects.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right. Any other uh, comments on uh, wastewater treatment, internal debt? Counselor Chair?
Uh, just with the current interest rates, your worship, I'm in favor of keeping everything as internal as possible right now.
Yeah.
The financial climate.
Seen quite a change in the last couple of years, where we would look at uh, external debt maybe as a way of doing it, because rates were low.
Free money.
Yeah. All right, Counselor Orlando.
Uh, your worship through uh, the chair, a question for the finance director. Um, um, Ms. Moore, uh, just to get a summary uh, for someone uh, who maybe is not gonna read the report, just a verbal summary, so people understand. Uh, in terms of where it's, the funding is going to be uh, uh, allocated from, are these funds that are dedicated and appropriate? So, for example, somebody might say, are you taking from general fund, uh, and funding a sewer fund? Uh, and I've paid into that general fund, but I don't have sewer at my house, so why am I paying for this? Um, just wondering if, if I could uh, get sort of a general summary.
Ms. Moore?
Through your worship, absolutely. Uh, can you see my screen that I've just shared?
Yes.
Okay, so this is the wastewater treatment plant project as a whole, and how it is being funded. Um, and we have it broken into twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four in the total. Um, and so, in this situation, the total project costs are sixteen point eight million dollars. Uh, we have successfully received grant funding for nine point eight million dollars. Um, we have a one percent uh, assist factor for growth for um, D C C projects from the taxation base, so this is coming from the sewer capital reserve fund. Um, and then we have sewer development cost charges, so current D C Cs that we have collected for the the sewer fund, uh, from new construction and development. We have about one point two million dollars uh, going towards that. And then we have estimated that we will be using two point eight million from the Water D C C fund, and it's important to uh, understand that we're borrowing from a D C C fund, so that means that uh, growth is paying for this power shed, so approximately four million dollars in growth will pay for the wastewater treatment plant. And then finally, uh, this is an estimate, uh, it, it all depends on, on final cost, but uh, we originally had an external uh, borrowing bylaw for up to seven million dollars, and, and we're estimating approximately two point eight million in external borrowing uh, with this structure. Um, and for anyone who's watching and the public, the sewer capital reserve fund um, is all paid for through sewer users and not through taxation or water users. So this is all funded from either grants, new development, or sewer users.
Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Moore. Counselor Palmer, you have a question?
Uh, yeah, thank you, Mayor Souls, and thank you for that description in the, the chart. I think it's really helpful. Um, just a couple of comments, uh, just further to that. Uh, it, it's kind of interesting how, how we describe numbers and what they mean. Um, you know, it reminds me of the discussion we had on, uh, earlier in this, the council meeting regarding vacation rentals. You know, what can be done with downzoning and upzoning, of course, that has nothing to do with finances directly, but that understanding of what things mean. So, I, I'd just like to point out the development cost charges. Um, uh, your description wasn't inaccurate, um, but I'm just gonna clarify, so the sewer development cost charges, that is real money that was charged to development, developers to fund sewer specifically. So that's that one point two million dollars, and the water was money that was collected from development specifically for water, we're gonna borrow from that, and we gotta pay that back in the future. So the real money that was uh, that we collected through D C Cs over whatever period of time that's funding here, was that one point two million dollars. And one of the things that uh, that successive councils, I would suggest, has failed to do is to uh, address the D C Cs, because what could have that money in the, for the sewer development cost charges, what could have that been? If we had increased D C Cs, if that was appropriate, which was discussed certainly eight years ago, uh, a couple councils ago. Um, and uh, and because that is money that we'll, we'll never get now, and then it's uh, distributed amongst the sewer users. So, that, that's just a point that I would like to make, but I, it, it highlights, this is a good point where it highlights the that we, we, that it's relatively urgent uh, or is super important, maybe not urgent's the wrong thing, but because it was an urgent, we haven't done this, D C Cs, uh, you know, finalize that, and, but it's super important now over successive years, cause, you know, could have that been double? That's not going to be reflected on sewer users in general. Uh, thank you, Mayor Souls, and thanks for indulging me.
Yeah, thanks for your comments, you're right. Uh, you know, that compound interest on that, uh, that fund would have made quite a difference. Um, all right, Counselor Chair, you have a question?
I just wanna remind everybody that the D C C by law is in our strategic priorities, uh, with the timeline of now. So I don't know what the point of looking back at uh, previous councils.
Well, it's understanding history, that's really it. Um, but thanks for that. Um, okay. Do I have a motion on the table? We're actually just dealing with this, Counselor Palmer, you have a comment?
Yeah, I, I'd just like to, you know, I wasn't, it wasn't reflecting so much on what previous council, but it was just emphasizing the importance of D C Cs, so we've established that, which is great with this council. And I'm really impressed with our strategic uh, priority sessions, that we've been able to flag that, and now that's being incorporated on a regular basis. Certainly applaud our C A O for getting that, so that we don't lose track of that, and uh, because that was a weakness of previous council, so just showing that urgency. But absolutely, we're on a good path uh, moving ahead. Thank you, Mayor Souls.
Great. Okay, so we don't need a motion or anything on this, so any other questions regarding internal debt? Uh, wastewater treatment plant? Saying none, let's move on to policies and related property tax distribution, Ms. Moore, and uh, Counselor Orlando is leaving the room at this point.
Yeah, your worship and council policies.
All right, Ms. Moore, you're up.
Okay, uh, I'll try and bring some energy to this, since it's uh, five thirty almost. I do have a presentation around property tax distribution, and, and when I say distribution, it's it's how much are we taxing each property class uh, within the municipality. So I will get started here. In this presentation, I will review the key terms with you. Uh, Revelstoke's history around property tax distribution. I will review uh, an example called chasing the ratio. Uh, we will review the estimated twenty twenty-three non-market change, and then I will review uh, different options um, around property tax distribution and shifting the burden of taxation, uh, which I've, I've briefly, briefly mentioned and discussed uh, with Counselor Devlin's question earlier.
Okay.
Okay, and into the key terms, so we have uh, the term tax rate, and these are rates expressed as a dollar figure of one thousand dollars of assessed value. So uh, when we talk about tax rate
Stop you there, Ms. Moore. Are we looking at something on your screen, cause we still have wastewater?
Okay, yep, I'm gonna redo that. I must have been sharing that specific document here, give me a second here. And share screen. Okay.
There we go, thank you.
Can you see it now?
Yes, we can, thank you.
Okay, so I'll just go back one more slide. So, the contents of this presentation, uh, we will review the key terms for property tax distribution. We will look at Revelstoke's history related to tax distribution. We will review the chasing the ratio example that I have as an appendancy and in this presentation. Uh, we will talk about the estimated twenty twenty-three non-market change, and then we will review uh, three different options that council has around property tax distribution and potentially shifting the burden from one class to another. Okay, on to the next slide, which I assume you can see. The tax rate, these are rates expressed as a dollar figure of one thousand dollars of assessed value, and so uh, you may often think of a rate as a percentage, but for taxation purposes, it's a dollar figure per one thousand dollars of assessed value. You will often hear uh, us refer, or the community refer to ratios, and this is the tax rate relationship between the residential class and other property classes. For example, the business to residential ratio is four to one. Um, four times the amount for residential to commercial business other. Property tax classification, so each property is placed into one or more of nine different classes. Uh, B C assessment is responsible for assigning these classes to properties. Uh, the municipality does not have any say over this. Tax distribution, this is the total taxation collected from each property classification in comparison to total taxation collected for the year. So uh, we currently have policy F dash nine revenue and property tax, and in this policy, the residential class must hold a tax burden of minimum fifty percent. And what that means is the residential class must pay for at least fifty percent of the total property taxes that the city um, collects each year, and that would be described as a fifty percent taxation distribution for context. Okay, and we'll get into some of the history. So um, I did provide a detailed chart in the report of the taxation increases for each class uh, for the last ten years and the average. Um, and you'll see that some classes don't all have the exact same uh, property tax increase. However, the average for the last ten years is three point four two percent overall. Uh, from twenty ten to twenty eighteen, the business other class paid a lower tax increase than the residential class. This was um, to shift the burden to the residential class and continue to work towards getting us in compliance of the policy of a minimum fifty percent. In twenty nineteen, there was a successful appeal on a property to move a significant portion of business other to residential, and that has impacted uh, the distribution over the years uh, between business other to residential. And the residential and business other classes account for approximately ninety percent of the total taxation revenue collected each year. So there, there are two main, main classes, and often compared to each other. And because they uh, collect the bulk of the property taxes for the city, I provided this chart on the historical tax distribution. And in twenty seventeen, uh, you can see that the residential wasn't paying fifty percent. Um, they're at forty-six point seven six percent, and commercial was at forty-three uh, point zero four percent of the total taxation collected. And in twenty eighteen, we were still shifting the burden, so you see the residential go a little bit up, the commercial go a little bit down. And then in twenty nineteen, you see a big swing here, and this is related to that successful uh, appeal, where a significant portion uh, was moved from business other to residential, and therefore the residential class made up a, a larger portion of the tax distribution. And since then, uh, we have not shifted any uh, tax burden from uh, commercial other to uh, the residential class. Um, you'll see some changes here in the graph, like the, the business other class six going up incrementally from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-two. This is related to new construction, new development in town. Um, I think we've all seen several uh, larger commercial business other um, classified buildings go up, like hotels and whatnot. Uh, and as the new development uh, comes in, it does increase uh, how much total taxes commercial other is paying. However, however, we have not shifted the burden to business other when you see this increase. And over the last six years, uh, And over the last six years, I find.
Counselor Cherry has a question just regarding the last slide.
I might be able to hold off. It may be answered.
Okay, carry on.
And so now we get into the the ratio business other versus residential. This is what the Chamber of Commerce was commenting on. And as you can see, starting in twenty-seventeen here, we see our ratio climb and climb every year. However, we have not shifted the burden at any point towards the commercial business other class. And so you might be wondering, why is this? Why is the ratio continuing to climb year after year? And this is where the chasing the ratio example comes into play and that assessed values on homes are really prudent to impacting this ratio and the volatility on assessed values will persuade what the ratio is without us actually shifting any taxation burden. And it's important to note that residential class is they are assessed based off of market rate. And the business other class is assessed from BC assessment based off of an income-based approach. So they're not assessed necessarily the same way. For residential, it's really on recent sales in that neighborhood. And for business other, it is a bit more complex and on an income-based approach and not they don't have the market sales of businesses to be able to rely on data like that, like they can for residential.
Counselor Cherry.
Thanks, Your Worship. Seems like an appropriate time now. Through your worship, Ms. Moore. With us being lobbied by multiple businesses in the chamber, there's been questions about the mill rate and the tax ratio. I'm curious what the impact would be to the residential's residential taxes for every, say, one percent or point two five percent change, a drop on the commercial per home. And I understand if you might not have that info. Probably should have emailed you.
Through your worship and to Counselor Cherry, I don't have an exact calculation for you. In the report that I had the table, I believe commercial was was down one percent, residential was up approximately one percent. But I would have to do do a calculation for what that would look like. And sorry, it was for every one percent shift.
Yeah. Counselor Cherry is going to follow up.
Yeah.
Okay.
Whether it be done on the mill rate or the ratio, I'd like to see maybe one percent is too high, but kind of a breakdown on the impact per residence, you know, average per one thousand. What that flux would be.
And back to the.
Sorry.
Do you have more questions?
Yeah, just my goal is just to see what the impact would be. You know, on both sides.
Absolutely.
And that was a class six, obviously.
Thank you. Okay, through your worship, is everyone ready for me to continue?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So in this example, we'll start with year one. As the base year, we have House A assessed at a hundred thousand dollars. And Business B assessed at a hundred thousand dollars as well. House A is class one, Business B is class six, for your reference. In this example, the tax rate for House A is five dollars per one thousand dollars of assessed value, making their total taxes five hundred dollars per year. Business B, that has the same assessment, has a tax rate of fifteen dollars, making their total taxes fifteen hundred for the year. And the ratio here is three to one. And the total taxes collected are two thousand dollars. So this is the base year. And then I'll go through two different examples of doing what would happen if we were to do a fixed ratio versus a fixed distribution. Okay, so here in year two, House A, they had a really big increase in assessed value. It went up to two hundred thousand dollars. It doubled, it went up a hundred percent. Business B, it went up fifty thousand dollars, so not at the same rate. It went up fifty percent. And so in order to keep the distribution the same, so that House A pays five hundred dollars and Business B pays fifteen hundred dollars, the ratio now becomes four to one. And the tax rate for the residential property, the dollar figure has to reduce because assessed value has increased so much, and it is increased at a higher rate than the business class. So here you can see, we've changed, no change to taxation, but our ratio has now climbed from four to one if we tax them the exact same amount in year two. And here's the second option for year two, and this is a fixed ratio example. And it's the same same assessed value changes. So House A doubled, it goes up to two hundred thousand dollars. Business B goes up to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And if we were to fix the ratio at three to one, you now have House A paying six hundred and fifty dollars in taxes and Business B paying less. It pays one thousand three hundred and eighty-five dollars in taxes with a total of two thousand more. Or a total of two thousand taxes. And so in this example, the residentials pay twenty-three percent more in taxation and the business other pays twenty-three percent less. This this can cause significant swings in taxation with the assessed values for homes, especially in Revelstoke. We've seen massive increases on year after year on the assessed value for residential properties. And the volatility in the Revelstoke market over the last decade or two, we've seen a lot of swings in our ratio. And if if we were to remain at a fixed ratio, we would see the taxes jump all over the place of who is paying what. People wouldn't see that your average, oh, I paid three percent approximately more this year because I went up with the average assessed value. This will cause swings in taxation if if we were to have an example like this and keep the ratio fixed. And so that has been one of our struggles in Revelstoke with our current housing crisis and the volatility of the market here. In twenty-twenty-two, our tax distribution was, and this is just a full pie chart of it of what it looks like for a visual. So the dark green there, that is, or I guess maybe not the dark green, the the regular green is fifty-one percent for residential. And the business takes up approximately forty percent. It is rounded here in comparison to the other numbers. And you'll see that the recreation nonprofit, just take note of that, is basically non-existent as I get to the next slide. And for twenty-twenty-three, our estimated tax distribution at the moment without shifting any burden, this is just based off of changes in new development and new construction. We see the recreation nonprofit increase, and then we see the business other dark blue class decrease. Okay, and so our twenty-twenty-three estimated non-market change in the draft budget, we currently had approximately two hundred and ninety-one thousand budgeted for. I've given a table here of the total estimated non-market change after receiving the completed role from BC assessment. After speaking with them, they cautioned the city to rely on this entire estimated non-market change until the revised role is released at the beginning of April. And in this table, you can see that the recreation nonprofit has the most significant non-market change or new development happening in that class. And and this is related to the Cabot Golf Course.
Okay.
The recreation nonprofit increase is related to the new development of the golf course at the ski hill.
You think they're going to give you more? Would have been nice.
No, the the reason why they've cautioned us to not rely on this three hundred and fifty-three is in case it is less. So.
Build an AP areas. Don't worry, the honey will be cheap. Yo.
And so there are three options here today for the committee to review. We can always discuss in more detail if you have more questions, like Counselor Cherry has asked that I'll need to come back with. However, these are the options for twenty-twenty-three. Option one is the recommended option. Council applies a tax rate increase equally across all property tax classifications. So everyone has the same rate increase that council has set, which at the moment, the committee has recommended three percent. And any excess non-market change from what we have budgeted will be transferred to reserves for future major projects. So that access amount was approximately sixty thousand between what we budgeted and the new estimated non-market change. Option two, council applies a tax rate increase equally across all property tax classifications. And this is the same as option one. So council or the committee has currently recommended three percent to council. Any excess non-market change received will be used to reduce taxation in a specific property classification. So that's sixty thousand dollars. You could take that and say, let's reduce the business other class with that and try and reduce their tax burden that way. Option three, council chooses to incrementally shift the tax burden from one class to another, resulting in one property tax classification with a lower tax percentage increase and one or more tax classifications with a higher percentage increase. And this is the question that Counselor Cherry was asking about of what would that look like if we were to go down that road? And that is the end of my presentation.
So in regards to this, Ms. Moore, so if you gave us the option that Counselor Cherry's asking for, and we were able to kind of weigh that sort of situation at the finance committee meeting next week. I think it would give us, we've lost two counselors that are not sitting around the table, but it gives us a little better idea of what how we should move forward. Is that something that could be done?
Yes, absolutely.
Counselor Cherry.
In light of that comment, I'd like to put a motion on the table to defer this to the finance committee meeting as four of you counselors are the only ones in the room right now.
And that's fine. So you have a second or final motion? Counselor Lucio? Any further discussion on that? So we've already heard Ms. Moore's okay moving that to the finance committee meeting. We'll have a little more information and then we can talk about property tax distribution as a group again. All was in favor? Motion's carried. Thank you. Ms. Moore, Mr. Brogard, thank you for all the work you guys have done on the taxes this year. It's amazing and so appreciative. Giving us a better understanding of where we go and I think giving the community a chance to look at it in a way that actually makes sense. So I think that's pretty much it for today. Any further comments from either of you?
Through your worship, no further comments and looking forward to more discussions at the finance committee meeting next week.
No further comments from me, Your Worship.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Brogard. Thank you, Ms. Moore. All right, I'm going to ask for a motion to terminate. Counselor Statepaners, who's going to second that motion? Counselor Devon? All those in favor? Motion's carried. Maybe start me. Thank you. Thank you, guys, for your time.
One day, he's just going to sit here for like forty-five minutes, waiting us for waiting, making us wait him out.